How's it going?
Commissioner Rogan, are you on the phone?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. We are ready to begin. This Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded and can be viewed live on City of Las Vegas TV on Cox Cable Channel 2. You can also watch the meeting live online and access other city content by visiting lasvegasnevada.gov/connect. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on City of Las Vegas TV this Saturday after the meeting at 10:00 a.m., Monday at midnight, and the following Tuesday at 6:00 p.m. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with great justice, law, and
City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Taylor?
Present.
Vice Chair Kasama, excused, Commissioner Schlotman?
Present.
Commissioner Rogan?
Present.
Commissioner DeSalvio, excused, Commissioner Munford?
Present.
Commissioner LeBeau?
Present.
Thank you, Chair. You have a quorum.
Thank you. I call to your attention the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate your adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you. Next up is public comment. During this portion of the agenda, public comment must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion as well as the amount of any time, sorry, the amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made under this item for a specific action item will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item number five for possible action to approve the final minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of October 14, 2025. May we have a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of September 9, 2025?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve the Plan Commission meeting minutes of September 9, 2025.
Sorry, it's the October 14th.
Oh.
The October 14th.
Sorry.
Sorry, my agenda was wrong. The October 14, 2025, Plan Commission minutes.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote.
Commissioner Rogan?
Um, yes. Okay. We'll just get through a couple of things first. Okay, so for possible action, number, the next item up for possible action, any items from the planning, all right, sorry. I'm gonna stop for a second. Now that we've done that little order of business, I meant to do this during public comment. If everyone could just take a moment and welcome Commissioner Lindsey Lebo to the commission. She is Councilwoman Kelly's Planning Commissioner, and we're really excited to have her. So, thank you for committing to being part of public service, and we're really looking forward to your expertise on our commission. Okay, so with that, let's move on to number six for possible action. Any items from the Planning Commission, staff and/or the applicant? I am just not having a morning today. I am having a Monday morning today. Okay, let's move on to our housekeeping items. Are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Madam Chair, Nicole Eddos for the record. The applicant is requesting to withdraw without prejudice, item number 20. The applicant is requesting to hold item number 22 to the December 9 Planning Commission meeting. The applicant is requesting to hold item number 27 to the December 9 Planning Commission meeting. The applicant is requesting to hold item number 30 to the December 9 Planning Commission meeting. And there is an error on the agenda for item number 43. The agenda states staff recommends approval when the recommendation is denial by staff. Staff is requesting to strike, oh, I'm sorry. Disregard that one. And staff is requesting to hold item number 45 to the December 9 Planning Commission meeting in order to re-advertise the applications. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on any of these items? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair, if you could make a motion on the housekeeping items?
Yes, Madam Chair, through you on item number 20, I make a motion to withdraw without prejudice on items 22, 27, 30, and 45. Move to hold those items in abeyance till the December 9, 2025, Plan Commission meeting, and to correct the agenda to state that item number 43 is, has a staff recommendation for approval versus denial. That is my motion.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Please post, and that motion carries. Okay, consent items. These are considered routine by the Planning Commission and may be enacted by one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a commission member or applicant so desires. Vice Chair, may I have a motion on our consent agenda, consent items, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, on the consent agenda items, items number seven, eight, nine, and 10, move to approve subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Please post, and that motion carries.
And Madam Chair, those items are final action tonight, and let's appeal to the City Clerk in seven days.
Thank you. All right, we'll now move on to our one motion, one vote agenda. The following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items with a staff recommendation of approval. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Number 11, abeyance, 25-0348 SUP 1, applicant HFW LLC, owner Five Hills LP, for possible action on land use entitlement project request for proposed 1,166 square foot pubs, bars, and lounges, alcohol on-premise and ancillary off-premise beer/wine use at 9300 Sun City Boulevard, Suite 103, Ward 4, Allen Palinsky. Item 12, 25-0414 SUP 1, applicant Wing H Law, owner Sahara 2020 LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for proposed 1,938 square foot alcohol on-premise full use with a 965 square foot outdoor area with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a church-house of worship where 400 feet is required at 3601 West Sahara Avenue, Suite 113, Ward 3 Diaz. Item 13, 25-0415 VAC 1, applicant-owner CSP Bridger Avenue LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for petition to vacate multiple City of Las Vegas easements generally located halfway between 13th and 14th Street, north of Lewis Avenue and south of Bridger Avenue and along the north side of Lewis, Ward 3 Diaz. Item 14, 25-0426 VAC 1, applicant-owner Northland LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for petition to vacate a portion of a public drainage easement and a portion of a public sewer easement generally located at the northwest corner of Sunstone Parkway and North Sky Canyon Park Drive, Ward 6 Bruni. Item 15, 25-0433 SUP 1, applicant Assent Dregulay, owner KLA Capital Series 6 LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for proposed 1,090 square foot alcohol production craft use with a 725 square foot outdoor patio area at 28 West Wyoming Avenue, Ward 3 Diaz. Item 16, 25-0441 SUP 1, applicant Giselle Sedeno, owner Mershop Rainbow Boulevard LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for proposed financial institution specified use with waivers to allow 1,117 square foot site area dedicated to the use where 1,500 square feet is the minimum required and an 80-foot distance separation from residentially zoned property where 200 feet is required at 1,725 South Rainbow Boulevard, Suite 19, Ward 1 Knutson. Item 17, 25-0448 VAC, applicant The Colita Group LLC, owner Palm Fund LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for petition to vacate a portion of a 20-foot wide public sewer easement generally located at the southeast corner of Alta and Clubhouse Drive, Ward 2 Kelly. Item 18, 25-0450, applicant-owner 712 Holdings LLC and FPK Professional Services LLC, for possible action on the following land use entitlement project requests at 712 and 714 South First Street, Ward 3 Diaz. 18A, 25-0450 SUP 1, for proposed gaming establishment, restricted 6 to 15 machines at 714 South First Street, APN 13934310015. 18B, 25-0450 SUP 2, for proposed 5,803 square foot alcohol on-premise full use with a 496 square foot patio area and a 1,207 square foot rooftop deck area use at 712 South First Street, APN 13934301016. 18C, 25-0450 SUP 3, for proposed 7,468 square foot alcohol on-premise full use with alcohol off-premise ancillary at 714 South First Street, APN 13934310015. Item 19, 25-0455, public hearing applicant Abel Baker Bomb Shelter LLC, owner KRG Las Vegas Centennial Center LLC, for possible action on the following land use entitlement project requests on a portion of 18.86 acres at the northwest corner of Tropical Parkway and Centennial Center Boulevard, Ward 4, Allen Palinsky. 19A, 25-0455 SUP 1, for proposed 5,128 square foot liquor establishment tavern alcohol on-premise full and alcohol production craft use with a 2,315 square foot outdoor patio area with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a school where 400 feet is required. And 19B, 25-0455 SDR 1, for the proposed addition of outdoor patio areas to an existing commercial building and parking lot reconfiguration. Item 20, 25-0467 SUP 1, applicant halftime speak easy owner G Capital Investment LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement. Oh, sorry, 20 was withdrawn?
Chair, I think item 20 was removed.
Thank you. I was just... Huh? I was on a roll. Okay, and with that correction, that concludes our one motion, one vote. Vice Chair, may I have a motion on the one motion, one vote items, please? Oh, okay. Sorry. These items have been noted for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard? Okay, seeing none on one motion, one vote. Vice Chair, now may I have a motion on the one motion, one vote items, please?
Yes, and Madam Chair, before we get started on the motion on item number 18, I'm under contract with the property owner for that particular property, or one of those two properties, so I'll be abstaining on that matter. But other than that, I, on the one motion, one vote items 11 through 19, a move to approve subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Please post, and that motion carries.
And Madam Chair, items 11 through 15 and 17 through 19 are final action unless appealed to the City Clerk in 10 days, and item 16 will move on to City Council on December 17.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to our public hearing items. We are going to take some things out of order tonight, starting with item number 46. 25-0461 GPA 1, applicant-owner City of Las Vegas, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request to amend and incorporate a supplemental heat mitigation urban forestry management plan as part of the conservation element to the City of Las Vegas 2050 Master Plan, consistent with Section 11 of Ordinance 6788. Welcome, Mr. Valada. I am very excited to hear your presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners. Marco Valada, City of Las Vegas, Department of Community Development for the record. Joined here today by Brad Dassler, and I'll let him introduce himself.
Brad Dassler, urban forester for the City of Las Vegas.
And tonight, we have, as mentioned in the opening here, we have our city's urban forestry management plan. I've updated you several times on this, on this particular document. It has a little bit of a history to it that is rooted in the, some efforts at the legislature. First of all, the 2050 Master Plan has set the policy for a lot of special topics, including tree canopy coverage and urban heat mitigation. At the same time, we've also had a couple other policy documents that have been around for a while. we've also had a couple other policy documents that have been around for a while, one of which was a council-passed resolution in 2022 that set up this urban forestry program. And the, the program itself, one of the things that the resolution asked for was this development of this urban, urban forestry management plan, and provided some recommendations for what Brad and the Department of Parks and Recreation can do with respect to urban forestry and getting more trees planted citywide. And our overarching goal is to get more of them planted, both in the municipal space as well as on private property. At the same time, we also had Assembly Bill 96, and in the 2023 session, it was known as Senate Bill 169. Both of the, these bills had kind of the same language, SB 169 was vetoed, but it came back in the 2025 session and required, required a couple, a couple provisions with respect to heat mitigation. And really, in the 2050 plan, our long-term outcomes are to plant 60,000 trees over the next 25 years on both public and private property, as well as increase our urban forestry, our urban forest and the tree canopy coverage that we have by using native and adaptive drought-tolerant species. On the, in terms of a climate hazard, you know, we had identified a couple different things that were of concern. Of course, the drought being one of them, and water use, and how do you reconcile having trees being planted at the same time you have a drought going on, as well as extreme heat? And I think this, this plan ultimately answers, answers both. So the, the urban forestry resolution, again, you know, it's rooted with the 2050 plan, it's very consistent with it. It requires us to pursue Tree City USA, which we've been designated by the Arboretre Foundation for, or the Arbor Day Foundation for the past 30?
Thirty-three years.
Thirty-three years, as well as committing to other partnerships with, with groups in the, in the community and the creation of that urban forestry management plan. AB96 requires local governments of 100,000 or greater to develop a heat mitigation plan that looks specifically at a couple things, public cooling spaces, shading, drinking water, cool building practices, and then shade structures and urban tree canopies with the preference for native tree and drought-tolerant species. And with adoption of this plan, this would largely fulfill a part, that part of the, of AB96 in terms of its legislative intent, and we're adding this as a supplemental element to the 2050 master plan by doing this. So this plan provides this comprehensive framework for managing trees as essential assets of the city, and it describes what we have out there now in terms of our, our canopy, the thousands and thousands of trees that we have. How do we get another, another 60,000 planted on top of that, and what we, what do we do? Importantly, we also need to know how, what the condition of our urban forest is and how, how we are currently mitigating heat in, in the present form. I've mentioned in, in a couple of the previous reports, we have heat concentrate, heat concentrated in some of the areas where we have other socioeconomic and demographic variables that overlap each other. In the suburban parts of the Las Vegas Valley, we have pretty robust tree canopy. We've had master plan communities with development agreements or zoning regulations that require a large number of trees to be planted, and they're really well maintained. But in the core of the city, we've had some of our oldest trees as part of our canopy that have died over time, that have gotten sick, just a confluence of different things. And as a result, the, the tree canopy in, in, around downtown and in East Las Vegas, along the Charleston Corridor, they have thinned out over, over the years. And you look specifically at East Las Vegas, and we've talked about this for the East Las Vegas Special Area Plan, you know, right around Bonanza and Eastern Avenue is where we have the confluence of, of a lot of different things going on. We have older housing stock, we have a tree canopy at its, at its lowest in the, in the single digits in that area in terms of canopy coverage. We have a, a large percentage of the community is Latino, a lot of naturally occurring affordable housing. There's a lot of different factors that are going on there. So that, that part of town in particular is more susceptible to, to heat and the effects that, on public health as a result of that. I'm going to turn it over to Brad here to talk a little bit about the first part of this, of this plan, really the discussion of the, of the inventory of the trees that we have right now and what our consultant, Davy Resource Group, did to, to catalog the trees that we have.
So to Marco's point, in order to make any forward progress, we had to understand kind of where we were starting from. And so the last tree inventory that was done in the city was done in 2013, and it's only done on, on publicly owned trees. So it'd been almost a full decade since the trees had been inventoried. So as you can imagine, a lot of things changed in that time. Trees die, get removed, they grow. And so kind of our information around what we, what we owned, the asset that we owned and the value of it was skewed. So with the master plan, we conducted the first smart tree inventory. So the difference there is a traditional inventory, like the one that was done in 2013, is maybe someone like me goes out and walks through a park and they're measuring trees and identifying them and kind of giving them a rough condition. What we did is we essentially sent like a Google car through the parks and it took a LiDAR scan. So we have a digital twin of every tree that the city owns. So we understand, we, we better understand the condition of it, the structure of it, and the health of it. And so the first scan is, is important, but I think what makes this really valuable to the city is as we move forward with this program, we're going to conduct subsequent scans. And so we have this baseline where we know that a tree was 10 feet tall and in good condition in 2023. But then when we come back every other year, we're going to see which trees are performing really well, maybe cat, maybe, you know, catch some diseases or struggles that other trees are having. And it helps us make better management decisions as we're, you know, doing all of our complete streets projects, we're renovating parks, building new parks. And so we can make good decisions around the species of tree that we plant and kind of the conditions we put them in and how, and then how we manage them. So again, you know, management is a huge component of this, and understanding what we have allows me to better kind of assign people out and, and keep trees healthy and safe in, in the city. So.
Another component of the inventory is also the remote sensing that took place as a part of this. Understanding, you know, from an aerial view, what that canopy coverage actually is, and then breaking it down by our master plan areas or by wards of the, or wards of the city that we have. And as you can see, we've had, in terms of percent change over time, we've had a decrease in the, in the total number of trees and canopy coverage over time. And that, that is of concern, and that's one of the reasons why we're doing this, is we're trying to, we're trying to reverse some of that trend. And as, as you would expect, you know, you can, you can definitely see the potential for canopy coverage increases by planting not only on, on public property like we, like we do here with Parks and Rec, but also on private property. And that's something that we do through every entitlement application that comes on as part of development standards meeting Title 19, you need to plant a certain number of trees. And that's why, you know, when you, when you have some of these requests that come in before this body, there are those requests for waivers, you know, it might be, you know, every, every once in a while, you might have some that might make sense, you should, you should waive or exclude from a project. But, and you do that many, many times over the course of a couple decades, you start losing canopy as a result that would otherwise have been planted. So this plan will ultimately help get us some recommendations as to how we could, how we can mitigate that in the future and some of the things that we can talk through with applicants in terms of making sure we get trees planted where they need to be on property as well. So that land cover assessment, you know, understanding what we have out there in terms of the entire city, and you can, you can see throughout the plan, you know, we've got a lot of opportunities, not only in our rights way and in our, in our parks, but we have about 20,000-plus acres, 21,000 acres of plantable land across the city with the right types of, the right types of tree species, the, the types of species that belong within the Mojave Desert environment that are adapted to heat and the conditions that we have. And I'll let Brad talk, touch on that in just, just a sec.
Okay. So with the inventory, we obviously, we got, they identified every tree by species that, that the city owns. And this is, is only the trees that the city takes care of, but it seems like a pretty good representation of, of how trees break out over the whole of the valley. And so species diversity is a, kind of this pillar of urban forestry. And when we're, when we're creating canopy, we talk a lot about species diversity and making sure that we have, we don't over-invest in one species. And so this just get, this just kind of helps us and paints a picture and lets us know the direction that we need to go. So when we invest too heavily, like we have almost 13% or 15% Turkish pine, we have a lot of ash trees. And so these are trees that were historically planted in the city, and so now they represent a huge portion of the canopy. And that actually presents a problem to us, for us, in that if pine or ash become, you know, not as resilient in our climate, like there's some, there can be an insect, there can be a disease or just an intolerance to the heat or water that start, and we start to lose that, we can lose a large percentage of our canopy. And so when we're looking at different projects and when we're planning out streets, we're always trying to use different trees. We're trying to, to have, I keep saying diversity, but we want to have a large diversity of trees that kind of buffer against loss in the canopy.
So to get to where, where we want to be, we had UNLV as a, as one of our partners do a survey, as, as well as set up some stakeholder groups that Davy Resource Group assembled with us. And not surprisingly, there's broad community support for increasing the tree canopy. And we worked with a lot of different partners, tree planting organizations, members of the public, all, again, signaling us to, to take action on this. Because there is a willingness to, to continue on with some of the projects that we've had. And there is this understanding that we have a drought going on. And while there is that view that there is a little bit of a conflict with that, having the right trees in the right place and, and really making the specific selections in terms of species, you know, we have SNRPC and Southern Nevada Water Authority providing us lists of what some of those tree species are that are the most appropriate to plant in the community, that will get us that shade as well as be really efficient with their water utilization. So this, again, reinforced the fact that as a, as a community, there is this desire, there's an understanding we've got heat as a problem, as well as we need to have the right species there. So how do we get there long-term? There are a number of recommendations, and that's, that's essentially the bulk of the, of the remainder of the plan, is what types of things can we do? And, and it really runs the gamut, everything from tree protections to increasing urban forestry staffing and giving Brad and his team the resources, providing more data in terms of what, what's out there by doing these semi-annual inventories and educating the residents as to what to do. And, and really, the plan lays out a timeline of how do we get there over the next 25 years, what the costs are to the city as well as to, as to residents, and how easy it is to be able to do some of these things. Some of them are going to be a heavier lift than others. I mean, one of the top recommendations are, is refining that preferred species list to make sure that as, over time, if temperatures continue to increase, we have, you know, if there are some species that are more prone to the heat or to disease or to pests, or something comes up in the forestry that needs to be addressed, that, that gets refined. Working with organizations like SNWA and working with the tree planting community. And then in terms of policy that, that you, the Planning Commission, ultimately be responsible for, what will follow this is a text amendment that you'll see hopefully with, again, the, the information that we provided in here and that recommended from Davy Resources, is amendments to Title 19 and Title 13 of Las Vegas Municipal Code to address some of the specific things to make sure that the trees that are planted now are protected and that the trees that are to come in the future are the right ones in the right place. So with that, we'll, this is again, kind of a snapshot here of, of what is in, in the plan and some of its contents to give you an idea of what, what types of things to do. This one specifically on tree protections and waivers. You can find all that within here, and we have made a copy available online at masterplan.vegas for the public to review. And there will be further discussion on some of those specific policy changes. But this is kind of the first step here, is to provide information as well as get Brad the, the tools that he needs to help make some change within his department to get more trees out there. And I'll close with, one of the things that we have had happen over the last year is a USDA grant through the, through the Inflation Reduction Act. This has been kind of a long time coming, but for those who live in wards 1, 3, and 5, if you're interested in planting a tree and increasing a tree canopy coverage in the locations where it's needed the most, we do have available a tree bait grant that will provide a tree in the front yard of a, of a residential property. We do have a website that, and a link to this form here for anybody to sign up if they're interested. We have contracted with Par 3 at the last city council meeting, that, that was approved. And Brad and our team, Rachel Lewison, will be helping get us these trees out into the community over the next year. And with that, if there are any questions, be more than happy to answer.
Thank you very much. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will pass it over to the commission and see Commissioner Schlatman, go ahead.
Yes, Madam Chair, through you. With all the plants that the city is going to be planting in right-ofways and wherever else we may decide to plant those, is there a way we can get dedicated staff to, because I'm sure this goes through the maintenance department at the city to maintain those trees, is there a way to get dedicated staff or somehow to get on a routine schedule to go evaluate the irrigation systems and make sure that they're being properly maintained? Because I live on Fremont Street, and as I drive up and down Fremont Street on a daily basis several times, I, usually in the mornings when the irrigation system's going off, I see water shooting out, hitting the cars, everything but the plant. And sometimes it's better and sometimes it's worse. And, but we see it all the time, like even Arts District and other places where the city owns the trees versus having development agreements where the, where the neighboring properties are taking care of those trees, where, you know, there'll be one that dies and it'll get cut off and then it just won't get replaced. But if, I feel that if there is a response line or, or a way that we could get ahold of somebody to say, hey, this is happening, any of those things. But I think there needs to be a little bit more, you know, management and oversight of some of our, our trees to make sure that they actually live.
Yeah, so with the, with the downtown, we do have a maintenance crew that works down there. And it's sort of split between city staff who do some of the streets that don't have medians, and then some of it's contracted out, so we kind of support each other. Yeah, it, it's a lot of work and it's kind of, kind of like whack-a-mole. But I guess we have Formstack and we, and we do receive complaints and try and address those as quick as possible when the guys are out there. But yeah.
It just seems like we could, if we're focusing on planting as many trees as we're planning on planting another 60,000 trees, and I know all these aren't public trees, but it seems like the, maybe the city could look at just putting a little bit more funds to maintenance, just to make sure that all the hard work that you're doing to get these trees planted, that they, they grow up to be real nice big trees, you know. That's my only comment.
Just to piggyback from what I understand, maybe like a hotline or something for somebody to call, or even an app. I was looking at the Free Tree Program too. What, how is, is there, what kind of outreach is that, you know, for these areas, areas? I see, you know, Ward 5 is part of that. Is the city putting any money in terms of, you know, educating people that they can get a tree on their house and stuff like that?
Marco Valada, for the record, so Commissioner, the, this just started. It is grant-funded, and part of this is an education out, an outreach component. We will be working with the, with the PIOs, and we will make sure that information gets out there as to this opportunity. And for those that do end up having a tree that gets planted, there will be information as to how that... be information as to how that, how that tree gets cared for. We will be checking on the, the tree longer term as, as a part of this opportunity. So we will be coming back and making checks on a sample of, of the trees that end up getting planted. And yes, we will definitely be making sure that we get the word out there. We're just at the very, very beginning of this.
Perhaps maybe like an AI bot assistant to keep an eye on the trees.
Just a couple of questions, I guess. The first one I wanted to ask you was about species. And you clearly identify that both ash and pine, under your assessment, are exceeding the recommended percentage. And yet, we keep approving plans and master development agreements that have, for example, a significant amount of pine trees in them. I guess two questions. One, I drive around, and I think the pine trees look really poorly maintained as a general rule. Like, I see them in my area up in Ward Six, and they are not thriving, they need to be trimmed, they just don't look great. And so as we go forward with newer projects and new planning, is one of the considerations that you are going to be recommending staff make, and that we ask of our developers, to consider not planting any of those trees that exceed the thresholds that you've set out in this plan?
Yeah, I guess that would be our recommendation, is we have to kind of, we have to use different trees. We have to start bringing in different trees to build the canopy. I mean, we're dealing with insects that are eating up pine trees right now. Turf conversions have been pretty tough on some of our, like staple trees that we've used in the past. And so, yeah, I think when we're looking at the, the value of a tree, obviously it needs to be heat tolerant. But I think the amount of use goes into, to how we view that tree. So things that are getting a lot of use, we need to move away from that as, as a community. But it's a challenging thing to do, because, you know, designers, developers, they see these things, they want to continue patterns, they kind of see short-term success, but maybe are missing the bigger picture of, of us developing the canopy as a community. And so, you know, they're viewing it in kind of an isolated situation where they're building one property, and they want to use this one particular tree that they see doing well. So it's going to be a challenge, I think, to, to move people away from some of those things. But even incremental, you know, incremental changes are helpful if, you know, people are still prone to using a tree that's commercially available. And I think that that goes into some of the problem too. I mean, when you start to switch species, a nursery has to be how many steps ahead of that, to say this tree's available in, in this size that we're, that we're suggesting that you need to plant this in. So it, it's going to be a slow turn, but I think it's possible.
And you had a chart that had the decrease in canopy by ward. Do you have sort of like high-level bullet points of what caused that decrease in the different areas?
I don't right now. So I saw those numbers too, but I don't know exactly what they, what represents that loss. And again, I think what I was saying about the inventory, like as we move forward and kind of with subsequent smart tree inventory scans, that information will start to show up. But we were starting from an inventory that was almost a decade old. And so there was a lot of change that happened in that time.
Right. And you mentioned management. Is that only going to be for city-owned trees? Or did I just kind of miss?
Mark O'Vallada for the record. So, so the city-owned trees, that, that's under Brad's purview, and Parks and Rec and Brad's team will continue to be, as they have over the past, past years, continue to maintain those. But as far as like continued enforcement, that, that's one of the recommendations that, that is listed in here. That would be something that would need to change a little bit in Title 13. We do have some recommended language that goes along with it. Now, enforcing it though, that, that's going to be a larger discussion as to how we, as, how we go about that, because we do have a reactive code enforcement division. How do we get the larger issue of like, if there's a parking lot that says, that say, has a site plan that has a certain amount of trees or a certain type of species required, and they all, you know, start going away over time, which was what we've seen in wards one, three, and five over, over the years. You know, what do we do, what do we do about that? I mean, those are the things that we're going to have to talk through in terms of, yeah, enforcement. We've had previous cases here. I think we had one that came through Planning Commission, an R Q R for multifamily property in East Las Vegas, in which it was a code enforcement case, and ended up having to dig through some plant sets from the 1970s and kind of find out what was actually planted. But, I mean, that was an example there of a successful replanting that happened as a result of it. And we could maybe look at how we can fine tune that and make it a little bit easier to, to navigate, and ensure that those trees that have gone get replaced when they are required to be there.
Okay. Yeah, because I was just at a large medical facility, and there were all these parking diamonds, and like a shrub. And I know those were supposed to be trees, or were trees at one point, but it was, you know, private property. And then I guess I just want to just say thank you so much for bringing this forward. I mean, since I started on this commission, I think one of the very first projects that I saw was a project downtown. And I know how much we've been, the city's been focusing on trying to have walkable, transit-oriented, you know, trying to move people out of vehicles and provide different options for moving folks around. And I've been saying, you know, like, you can't do that if there's not canopy in the city. And so you can't support our urban core if we're just continuing to create larger areas of Heat Island. You can't do a lot of things if we don't have trees to, you know, protect lower-income folks from energy burden, and, you know, making sure that we have shade and walkability, and all of these other amazing assets that are in this report about what trees do. So I look forward to the next set of steps. I could talk with you guys about this forever and just go on about how much this matters to me personally. And this was one of the main things that I've really focused on since I've been on commission. But just, you know, thank you and look forward to your continued work. And, and as always, Mr. O'Vallada, thank you for your fantastic vision and innovation and leadership in these areas. So, go ahead.
This, this is a score, but I used to fight wildland fires. And one of the first things they, they teach us is that, you know, for, when you lose elevation, it gets hotter. So I'm noticing, I was noticing on the map, especially for like areas in East Las Vegas, that's a lower part of the valley. And I noticed that, that heat index was very high in that area. Is that something that we look at too, in terms of picking trees and canopy? And I know, you know, one of the things that we, you know, we know that if we have a south-facing slope on a mountain, there's usually less trees on there because they get burned up when they're young. So, you know, what, is that something that we're taking into account, you know, in terms of, you know, the area of the valley sometimes, just because it's at a lower elevation? The challenge, you know, for that canopy and those trees is because it's hotter in that part of the valley.
Yeah. Mark O'Vallada for the record. Commissioner, yeah, that is one of the considerations that we can, we can certainly take a look at. I mean, a lot of different factors go into it, obviously, that we've listed in here. But geography, even, you know, at 2,500 feet elevation versus, you know, the higher up at the 3,000 plus, I mean, we can look, take a look at what might be more appropriate, even though that, that's a relatively smaller span. I mean, there, there certainly could be those things. I mean, you can definitely see it as you go up Cal Canyon Road, up towards Mount Charleston. Things definitely change as you, as you go further and further up to the west. So we can, that would be one of the things that we can examine.
And I would say we're, we're already doing that. I mean, every plan set that kind of comes through, we're making individualized choices for trees in, in different situations and conditions. So, yeah, we're trying to put the right tree in a, in a situation where it's going to thrive and, and, you know, live a long life. So, yeah, we're, we're taking a lot of things into consideration when we're planning our landscapes and streetscapes and things like that.
All right. Seeing no other comments on this, I will go ahead and make a motion to approve item 25-0461 GPA 1, applicant owner, yep, for the amendment incorporation of a supplemental heat mitigation plan as part of the conservation element of the city's Las Vegas 2050 Master Plan. Motion on the floor, please cast your votes.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Please post. And that carries.
And Madam Chair, that will move on to City Council on December 17th.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving to item 23. That is abeyance 25-0106, applicant Encino Concrete Inc., owner H P Investments LLC, for possible action on the following land use entitlement project request at the southeast corner of Rancho Drive and Ricky Road, Ward Five Summers Armstrong. 23A, abeyance 25-0106 GPA from G C, General Commercial to L I R, Light Industrial and Research. 23B, abeyance 25-0106 Z O N 1 from C 2, General Commercial to C M, Commercial Industrial. And 23C, abeyance 25-0106, S D R for a proposed two-story, 3,000-square-foot contractor's plant, shop, and storage yard development with a waiver of perimeter landscape buffer requirements. May we have the staff report, please?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Steve Swanton, Senior Planner, Department of Community Development. Proposed contractor's plant, shop, and storage yard development is not compatible with the surrounding commercial uses along Rancho Drive, and does not align with the city's vision for this corridor. If approved, the requested general plan amendment and rezoning could introduce industrial uses into a predominantly commercial area, and the associated site development plan review includes waivers and exceptions that reduce required landscaping and tree canopy, exacerbating urban heat concerns. Staff recommends denial of all requests, subject to conditions on site development plan review if approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Can you please state and spell your name for the record, and tell us about the project?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Nathan Taylor, N A T H A N T A Y L O R. Just represent applicant here today. My address is 8414 West Farm Road. Wanted to bring up a couple things. This is a, a unique area and a unique project. Actually, my client searched all over to try to find a location for their business. They actually run a concrete business, but it's a little different than what you may think of an actual concrete business. All the concrete, actually, and I just want to explain this because it is different, and it was different from what I thought, when I thought about a concrete company, is all the concrete for this company is delivered to the site. So the only vehicles that will be here will be like some dump trucks, some work trucks, things like that. Their business hours will be like eight to five, so it won't be that disruptive to the area. What makes this kind of unique is that there is already C M to the north. To the south of us is C Two, which is actually a veterinarian clinic. And then just to orientate you a little bit, there's also C Two right across the street. Right here, next to us, is going to be a landscaping company. It's actually under construction right now, and it's actually a, a rather large parcel. I wanted to start, since we were talking about trees, figured we'd start with the landscaping plan. We're going to plant 10 24-inch box trees that are on here along Ricky. So the most intense part of landscaping will be on Ricky. If you travel probably about 100 yards on Ricky, you will get to your first residential property. Everything heading west is all commercial property. So you've got a construction company, a landscaping company, there's a lube and oil company across the street. And then we are going to have landscaping all along Rancho. And then one of the things, before I forget, I, I wanted to thank Commissioner Munford for taking a lot of time to come out to the site, to meet with us, to talk to us about this, because it is a unique site. And it is, again, off of Rancho. And so it's, it's a little difficult when you're dealing with a major thoroughfare like Rancho, to figure out what fits. And this is also a corner lot, which right now, the pictures that were, that staff showed, you can see the lot needs a lot of work. It's, it's pretty dirty right now and needs a business there. We're also going to be constructing a 3,000-square-foot building. It'll be two stories, it's in the front. And this will be basically just their office space. The, most of their dealings with their customers will be on-site, so it will not be here on-premise. So the parking, the biggest vehicles they'll have is a 10-wheeler dump truck. The rest of them will be regular vehicles. And with that, we would just request your approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will pass this back to the commission, starting with Commissioner Munford.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. And then I think you mentioned too, that you had a, you did do announcement for a meeting for residents and businesses in the area, but nobody showed up?
Yes, so we were required to have a neighborhood meeting, Commissioner, and I would say nobody showed up, but Lex was there. Lex shows up to these things. So, but, so I don't want to say nobody was there. Lex did show up.
Okay. And then from what I understand, the, like you mentioned, most, most of the, most of, this is really going to be more about just parking your, your vehicles there, having an office to take in business and do your business with your company. And you're really, the type of business does require that you have this type of zoning. But like you mentioned, most of, you know, almost all of your, your cement mixing and all that, and I've, and I've worked construction sites, so I'm familiar with what you're doing. So a lot of that happens, you know, on construction sites away from this area. So really, it's more of a, although you have to, you're required to get this type of zoning for that type of business, but most of your activity is going to be offsite at construction sites in terms of mixing concrete, laying concrete. If I, I'm, I'm understanding that correctly.
That is correct. And through you, Madam Chair, I forgot to mention that we did agree, I don't know if it needs to be conditioned, but we did agree that all ingress egress would be off of Rancho and not Ricky. And this would be a gate here along Ricky, and the gate would only be there for emergency purposes. So we did agree to that. I'm not sure if that needs to be conditioned here tonight.
Okay. And then from what I understand too, you have landscaping that'll be along Rancho and Ricky, and then instead of that chain link fence that we see on the property now, especially on the east and southern border, that's going to be a, is that going to be like a block wall, or?
It'll be an eight-foot block wall all the way around. And there's also barbed wire on top of that too, which I know nobody likes the barbed wire, doesn't look good, and it's not safe. And unfortunately, this parcel too, one of the things I noticed when we were out there last week, was that there's a lot of homeless going on to this parcel. And because there is an opening in the fence, and so this will, this will be exciting to have an actual business here running that will actually look nice. And like I said, there's, we're surrounded by C Two and C M, and so I think this is going to fit perfectly.
Yeah, when I went out there, there's a lot of, there is a lot of automotive repair that, in my opinion, there's just a lot of auto, and, you know, they got oil and drills and everything going on. And it sounds like this business, like I said, is just going to be driving mostly offsite and going to the job site, not really doing any concrete mixing or anything. So it's just, it's, it's use. So, you know, for me, I can, after, you know, meeting with, with your clients and stuff, I also, you know, did discuss this with the, with the councilwoman for Ward Five. And she, that was some of the things she was concerned with, was, was access and landscaping and the block wall. And it sounds like- sounds like she's going to work with you guys when this moves on to, you know, to the City Council. So I, I would like to, you know, I, I can get behind this. As I mentioned to you before, you know, I'm, I'm always trying to, to do what I can, even, even if, you know, our, our planning department is, does a great job, and, but, you know, at times, especially with what you guys are doing, you know, I'd like to see small businesses, you know, grow and thrive. And I, I think for this use on this, on this corner with what you guys are going to do, don't want to see any concrete mixing or anything like that. But just, like I said, you're using it for as an office, just to keep your vehicles, and you'll be just leaving and coming and going, doing your, your business outside of that property. That's, I, I can get behind this project. If there's any other comments?
Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, Madam Chair, through you. Can you repeat what you just said about barbed wire?
That there's currently barbed wire on the fence.
And that barbed wire is not going up on the new fence?
It'll be a block wall, eight foot.
Okay, with no barbed wire?
Absolutely. I can't wait for the barbed wire to come down.
Okay. I, I was thinking that we were saying we're going to be installing it on the top, so, okay.
And that's actually what I thought I heard too. So thank you, Commissioner, for getting that clarification. I, I'm very familiar with this area, and I, you know, in fairness, I have not gone and walked the site. I'm very supportive of small businesses, but I'm just very concerned about that kind of an intensity of a rezone in this area. There are rural estates, there are subdivisions that are really, really close to this. Clearly, this, I was not on planning commission at the time that the property to the east was zoned CM. You know, you just heard us make a vote, or, you know, there was an issue with the next property to the east. I'm also tremendously concerned. We just talked about urban canopy. We just talked about urban heat island, and you've got less than half the trees required on this site. If this really is simply for storage and office facilities, I don't know why there can't be trees planted around the perimeter. This is one of the highest areas of urban heat island, and so we're going to have, you know, asphalt on this site next to residences, next to other businesses. I don't know what kind of noise is going to be generated, but you've got a vet right next to you. And so I, I have some tremendous concerns about this project, and again, knowing this area very well, even though it's not Ward 6, but I do know this little quadrant of Ward 5 very well. And so I just, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I just can't support this as it is currently constituted. So, you know, obviously, Commissioner Munford will make, make his motion, but I, I just wanted to let you know, I just, I'm sorry, folks, I just don't think I can support this project. Commissioner Lebo?
Yes, Commissioner Lebo, for the record. Do you have a question about the trucks that you're going to have in that yard in the back, and how tall those trucks are? Do you know?
About eight feet.
About eight feet, okay.
Eight feet's the tallest.
Okay. So the, so the eight-foot wall will completely screen?
That's true, yes, correct.
Okay, all right. Is there anything else that will be stored in that yard? Any type of concrete mix or stone?
No, just, just regular trucks that are going to the job sites.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Commissioner Munford, who want to make your motion?
All right, through you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I apologize. We just realized that one of the conditions of approval was cut off in the staff report. May I please read that into the record so that we have it documented before it moves on to City Council?
Yes, please do.
That is condition of approval number 15, and that needs to state per Title 19, per Title 1312, dedicate a 25-foot radius at the southeast corner of Rancho Drive and Ricky Road prior, I'm sorry, Josh, you want to?
Prior to approval of construction permits.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Munford.
Okay. Through you, Madam Chair. Also, just wanted to add, now, we did have a similar property on Ricky down east of there that was, was coming before the, the planning commission. Now, the, the issue with that one was it was right across the street from residential. Are you familiar with that property?
That was my project, and it was actually right across the street from residential. We're about a football field away from any homes.
So you're, you have some distance from residential on that location?
What's interesting about this project is that it's essentially the same project I brought to you on Tom Boulevard. It's just that it's not across the street from a house.
Yeah, okay. So I just want, I just wanted to put that out there for the record. I'd like to motion, I would like to motion, make a motion for approval, subject to all conditions with the, any, any added conditions per planning. Are you fine with those conditions?
I accept the conditions, sir.
Okay. I'd like to move for, make a motion for approval.
There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote.
Commissioner Rogan?
No.
Please post, and that motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, those, those items will move on to City Council on December 17th. The general plan amendment, which requires a supermajority, will move on with no recommendation.
All right, thank you. Next item up is going to be item number 24, abeyance 25-0362 GPA applicant Kalida Residential Owner, Kalida Residential LLC owner ZSF Office NV Trust et al. for possible action on a land use entitlement project request from TOD Transit Oriented Development Lo to C, TOC Transit Oriented Corridor High at the southeast corner of Sahara Avenue and Crystal Water Way, Ward 2 Kelly. Staff recommends approval. Can we have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, the proposed transit-oriented corridor high designation is appropriate for this location due to, due to that designation sensitivity with transition to adjacent neighborhoods which abut the site to the north, south, and west. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the requested general plan amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, sir. If you can please state and spell your name for the record and your address, and tell us about the project. And sorry to ask, but if you can be expeditious, we've got a member of the Commission on the phone that needs to get going, so.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Bob Gronhour, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing Kalida Residential on this item that's before you. To be brief, we appreciate staff's recommendation for approval. This is a first step of a two-step process for us. The property is located here, as you can see highlighted in yellow. You may remember the old City Court Building. Canyon Gate is located across the street on Sahara in this area. This is Durango, so we are west of Durango on the south side of Sahara. This is about 28 acres of property. It's an infill piece of property. The type of general plan that we're asking for, the TOC designation, as staff has mentioned, this is a perfect category here to rip down existing commercial that has actually been vacant for a while, and we're going to transition this into a mixed-use development where our proposal would be to have some commercial uses up on front and some residential in the property in here. We did have a neighborhood meeting about, I'd say, several weeks ago as required by code. In those discussions, we told the neighbors that we will continue to work with them once we get a site plan ready to go, and at that point in time, we'll be getting ready to submit the new applications in. But we will continue to have neighborhood meetings as we go through the design process. With that being said, I can answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gronhour. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard? Come on down, sir, if you are going to be wanting to be heard on any item. As soon as that item comes up and the applicant starts speaking, please come down to the front row so we can move along. If you'll just come down to the podium and grab a microphone.
How long do I have?
You have two minutes.
Two minutes?
Yep.
Because I've got about 10 minutes of talking.
Well.
But my name is Daniel Hall. I live at Beathliff Creek condominiums. We're directly across the street from this property. And while Kalida might build nice projects around the valley here, what they're proposing for our neighborhood is totally out of character with what is there now. The Lakes was built about 30, almost 40 years ago, and the issues I have with this, aside from, you know, how it will blend with the existing neighborhood, is first of all, the density that they want. It's going to be way over maximum usual density that we have in that neighborhood. And then, associated with that is the number of cars that will be associated with, you know, on the low end, it's going to be an additional 500 automobiles in this small area, you know, of Crystal Water, which is a 25 mile-per-hour speed limit, and the intersection of Lake North, which is 35. It's, it's going to, there's a lot of pedestrians. My kids grew up there riding their bikes, a lot of joggers, people using those streets, and with this extra traffic, it's, I think it's going to bring additional safety hazards to the people, the residents that live there now. My, I would request if a traffic study be done for this before anything else goes forward. I think that's a perfectly reasonable thing to ask, is to see what the impact will be on the community. Because, like I said, the, the speed limits there are very low, and you have that many cars coming and going. It's, it's going to change the whole dynamics of the community. I have a lot more to say, but thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And it looks like there's quite a few opposition letters with points in the, in the backup for folks to review. Anybody else? Nope, okay, Mr. Gronhour?
Just quickly, with the gentleman who came here with his question, we did talk to the neighbors in our neighborhood meeting with respect to traffic circulation. That is one of the things that we'll be working with them. As we mentioned, is there going to be additional curb cuts on Sahara. You already have with the already building that's here, there's access that was coming down to the south, access coming out in this area and along to the north. And as we mentioned to the neighbors, once we put a site plan together, we'll work on those circulation discussions at that point in time.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll go ahead and pass it back to the Commission, starting with Commissioner Lebo.
Thank you so much, Madam Commissioner. I do, I'm a small business owner. My place of business is directly adjacent to this site and has been for the past 10 years, so I'm very familiar with this land. I do believe that the highest and best use for this site is for multifamily residential mixed use. And I do echo the same concerns with the traffic studies and making sure that what is proposed for this area can blend into what is existing. The Lakes has a very unique character, as everyone knows. Everything in that area was built, you know, 25, 30, 40 years ago. And so, I think moving forward, we'd like to really stay involved with what Kalida Group is proposing, and make sure that, you know, pedestrians are safe off of Crystal Water Way and Lake East Drive and Lake Sahara Drive, because currently there's no pedestrian access on, on one side of either of those streets. But like I mentioned, that, that'll be kind of later, down the road in the next, next session, so.
I will pass it along. Thank you, Commissioner Munford. Commissioner Schlotman?
No, and commenting on the traffic study, it is something that, it's common that we will see, but it's something that we'll see whenever we figure out, whenever there's a, a project and we have a, the site development review and those items. And I'm pretty sure that this is going to trigger a pretty major traffic study. And I see public works nodding their head, yes. So I, I'm, I'm sure we, Madam Chair, if you don't mind?
Yes, there is no conditions associated with this general plan amendment, but when they come in for a site development review, there will be a traffic study, and the traffic study will encompass pedestrian safety as well, and the driveways on Sahara.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And as I understand it, this will be mixed use with commercial front in Sahara?
Mixed use, yep.
And then, what kind of, I know the site design review is not here, but are you taking into considera, into consideration sufficient buffering along Lake East Drive, Crystal Water Way, so that there is, you know, some break between the apartments and then the existing residences and condos?
We had that discussion with the neighbors in our neighborhood meeting. We know that is one of the items that we need to work on with the neighbors, yes.
And then, what, which of the Kalida products are you anticipating this is going to be?
Right now, one of them, right now, tentatively, and that may change coming, it would be the Ainsley product, which is one that we got approved at Queens Ridge about, actually, within the last couple of weeks at City Council, and the Ainsley project that's being built over at Durango, that would be one of the two products. The other one may be an Elysian product, but that is to be finalized by the time we get to the neighborhood meeting of explaining the two different products that we'll have.
And within the sort of market segment of the Kalida prop, products, where does Ainsley fall? Where does Elysian fall?
Yeah, the Ainsley is the highest level. As I mentioned when we were over at Queens Ridge, I believe the average rents are $2,500 a month, where we had penthouses, the penthouse apartments who were about $6,000, if it was just shy of $6,000 a month. So that would be that Ainsley product that would be located here. The Elysian product is a little, is lower than that. I don't know those rent net, rent numbers off the top of my head. I only know the Ainsley because I just remember, we just did this like two weeks ago at Queens Ridge.
But it's at least market, if not above?
Yeah, it's, it's definitely a market. As you may know, Kalida Residential is a luxury builder, and they have different, the Eli would be the lower end of their product, which would probably be more workforce housing that you're dealing with, if I use the correct term.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any other questions. Commissioner, would you like to make a motion?
A motion to approve?
And that's for item 24, abeyance 25-0362 GPA. And there's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
And that motion carries?
And Madam Chair, that item will move on to City Council on December 17th. And I have one correction for item 23. I indicated that the GPA associated with that one would move on with no recommendation. That will actually move on with a denial recommendation for failure to reach a supermajority.
Thank you. And this one didn't achieve a supermajority, item 24. Okay. So next up, we'll have item 26. Also, Mr. Gronhour, abeyance 25-0376 applicant KB Home of Nevada Inc. et al., owner Kyle Ridge LLC et al. For possible action on the following land use entitlement project request at the northwest corner of Log Cabin Way and Alpine Ridgeway, Ward 6 Bruny. Staff recommends approval on 25-0376 GPA1 and ZON1. Staff recommends denial on 25-0376 VAR1, VAC1, and TMP1. 26A abeyance 25-0376 GPA1 from PCD Planned Community Development to ML Medium Low Density Residential. 26B abeyance 25-0376 ZON1 from U undeveloped PCD Planned Community Development, general plan designation to RCL Single Family Compact Lot. 26C abeyance 25-0376 VAR1 to allow private gated streets that do not conform to Title 19.04 Complete Street Standards. 26D abeyance 25-0376 VAC1, petition to vacate U.S. government patent easements and portions of public rights of way Larry McBride Street and Ruston Road. 26E abeyance 25-0376 TMP Creston for proposed 232 lot single-family residential subdivision. May I have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, the proposed general plan amendment and rezoning are compatible with the designations and densities of the adjacent parcels and conform with the Kyle Canyon Area Plan and Las Vegas 2050 Master Plan. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the requested general plan amendment and rezoning. On the other hand, no unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented to warrant the requested variance of complete street standards to allow stub streets and no sidewalk for portions of the stub streets. As such, staff is recommending denial of the requested variance and associated petition to vacate and tentative map. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening again. If you can please state and spell your name for the record, give us your address, and tell us about this project.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name's Bob Gronhour, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing KB Home on the matters that are before you. The first thing that I'll do is get your attention to the overhead here to give you the idea of where our property is located. Actually, this is located up in the Kyle Canyon Actually, this is located up in the Kyle Canyon area. You might have recall, earlier this year, you approved the Kyle Canyon Master Plan up in this area. To give you a little bit more of an idea, this is US 95 in this area, as, as you can see. In this area is the interchange here for Kyle Canyon, which if you take Kyle Canyon Road in this area, you head right up to Mount Charleston, heading up to the west. As I mentioned to you, this is Kyle Canyon Gateway. This project was approved several years ago for single family residential development. The main developers here were KB Home and TriPoint in this area. And the rest of the stuff that you see developed in this area, and that's been approved for the most part, which I'll get in in another exhibit, has been for additional homes by those two builders and one other builder, Richmond American Homes, which has, had a project that was recently approved down in this area. As staff has mentioned, this is the, that general plan for the area. One of the things I want to point out to you is you can see the location here of the property. I should have mentioned earlier, this is about 30 acres of property, so this is a good, good piece of property in this area. You're not, as you know, because of the land constraints in, in the valley, it's hard to find properties of this size for development. So we were lucky to be able to put together 30 acres of property in this area. As you can see in this orange area that I'm showing you along with the blue, this is the most intense area that's planned in Kyle Canyon, because you do have Sheep Mountain Parkway that runs in this area, right here along the white line as I'm showing you. You do have low density that's already approved down in this area and existing. And as I get into the next plan, I'll show you, there's a variety of different densities that has actually been approved. When you take a look at this plan here, what you'll see is over the last several years, from the beginning of the first development to all the other developments that have been approved, along with what our property is located here, we feel that this is compatible to the area at single family detached homes. There's a variety of homes, and the main thing is, and I'll get into when I get into the site plan, is what is somewhat refreshing here, you have builders in this instance that are working together. We have builders that are working together, which is TriPoint Home, Homes and KB Home in this area, and they've done a lot of shared infrastructure, working on everything. And with the direction of the councilwoman's office and the planning commissioner, a lot of the green spaces that you see out here, typically when you do RCL projects, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, they're not required to have open space in RCLs. However, it, it's been impressed upon the builders come in with open space with their developments and coming in with some type of amenity plan. So this is something that was asked of us to put together. I'm not going to go through all the amenities and all these different subdivisions, but to show you an overall view of a planned area where you do have connectivity in this area by the builders working together along with the councilwoman's office. One of the things I do want to point out here, which is about the vacation, okay? There is the Larry McBride Street, which is located right in this area in this alignment. We're asking to vacate that street, although staff's recommending denial, but I could explain to you what's happening. TriPoint has an application before city council to come in with a waiver of condition or review of condition to remove the requirement of putting in Larry McBride Street located in this area. We are coming in and asking for a vacation of this street, and one of the reasons why the vacation's being recommended for denial is, is because there is a street to be dedicated by TriPoint. As I'm showing you on the plans here now, which makes perfect sense, if you're following along, I'm doing a good enough job, is the reason for this is we're working together on a drainage solution. So both TriPoint and KB are together working on drainage solutions in this area, because if you're familiar, there is no regional facilities today. That's all up in Moccasin, that someday will come. And because of that, the builders in this area have been losing land to create their own detention basins. And so there's going to be a detention basin in here, so there's a lot of drainage nuances, if you're familiar with development, that you got to run into, that you typically won't run into on another project throughout the valley, because you don't build detention basins in residential developments, except if you're in this area here. So because of that, we're asking to vacate this area, but the good news about that is then we're coming in with a trail, it's about 30 feet in width in this area, and you can see here, there's some connectivity in this area, which otherwise would not be done, because it's not a master plan community. If anything, it is individual developments, but when you have a leadership that is acknowledging or at least asking the developers to come in and do these things, this is what you get for the community. And again, I'll get into the site plan here in a second. And the site plan, I look at this and we look at this, this is going to be built in like three different phases. We call this phase one, phase two in the middle, phase three. It's 10 acres a piece for the developments that we're going to be coming through. As you'll see, the green spaces that we're providing in here. Although I don't have a true amenity plan today, I, hopefully you can appreciate, and I'm going to explain why in talking to KB Home, what they do and what they're doing with the new buyers that are buying up in this area, their salespeople are getting feedback from the potential customer and the buyer. And as of right now, because these are entry level homes, and you know, with entry level homes, what comes with entry level homes is typically children and kids and young families. So we do know we're going to be providing some totlot type of features in here to address, you know, the, the kid level experience. But also what has been, we found that was very important for developments up here are dog parks. So we do know those are some of the amenities that we'll be coming in with. It's just that I can't give you everything here, standing here today, because again, these will be programmed. We understand the messages don't come in with a barbecue pit or barbecue in a casita, so to speak. There's going to be more to that, but the key is, is we want to give what the customer wants, so what the home buyer wants, because the home buyer that's going to live here, they're going to pay for it, and they're going to use it. So that's what we want to make sure, instead of putting something in there that they may not use, then the HOA will have to come in, rip it up, and do something else and spend more money. So with that being said, those are the proposals that we have with the green in the area of putting open space there. As far as compatibility, I, I had one of my colleagues put in an exhibit together for me today and trying to get the exact densities. And we've had this discussion with the chair, I, I've had with respect to the location of our property. This is coming in about 7.31 units an acre. We feel, respectfully, that it's compatible, although TriPoint is across, adjacent to us at 4.35, and they have, I want to make sure, about, I think that's about 3.4 units an acre, and that's 3.72 units an acre that TriPoint has. The reason why we do feel that it's compatible, one is, as I already explained to you, that we are working closely with TriPoint, so TriPoint knows what we're building in this area, we're right adjacent. As a matter of fact, the Richmond product that's in this area, I think is about seven units an acre, which actually, it comes out at 8.35 on here, but let's, let's say, call it eight, just for conversation purposes. So we are already working in jointly with TriPoint with respect to the type of development they have and what we have. But what I do want to point out is what is important here, what TriPoint has a concern about, is if there is any concerns with this type of development, that if we change our product design here, because those of you who know in home building, you need product segmentation, we can't have the same lot size and house in this area, because then what will happen is the builders will eat each other up, because nothing will happen because you're selling the same product. So what you need is a diversification in product, which is that product segmentation. So where these builders work together in this area is, each of them know what product you're selling. And what's ironic about this, this conversation is, this development here and this development here is very similar, we could say exact, to these type of developments that are already existing, because those homes that we're going to be building with KB Home are exactly in those neighborhoods that are there today, very popular product. So we'd ask you to follow the staff's recommendation approval for the general plan amendment for the zone change, and then also then for the vacation, as I explained to you, and with respect to the variance, that is, on two of our streets, we don't have a sidewalk on our stub streets, but we do have one side sidewalk on our streets that are gated in this area, which is similar to the other developments that we have up in, up in here in Kyle Canyon. So that being said, I'm here to answer any other questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard for this item? Okay, seeing none, I will pass it back to the commission, and I will look at the rest of my commissioners and see if anyone has questions on this one. Commissioner? Me? Okay. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Grownhour. I know that we have spent a lot of time talking about this project, and I very much appreciate you and your firm's continued collaboration and work with us to craft great communities, not just subdivisions. I, I retain many of my concerns and reservations about the project that, that we have discussed, including the density's harmonious nature, given where it's sited, relative to the surrounding densities. So, you know, and I know that we have some other issues to address in terms of site design, like the curbing. And you understand from the discussions we've had about the, the concerns with our curb in these very compact lots. But knowing that there's still work to be done and that you are speaking with the councilwoman, and we have done a lot of yeoman's work on this project as it is, I reluctantly feel comfortable making a motion to approve it, to just move it along to the next step, and given that we do have a GPA, and I want to make sure we get a vote on that with a supermajority sitting here. So I will go ahead and make a motion to approve item 26 and its subparts. And there is a motion on the floor, please cast your votes.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
And that motion does pass with the required supermajority.
And those items will move on to city council on December 17th.
And Madam Chair, as you know, we'll continue to keep you in these conversations. You're not going anywhere, and I'm not going anywhere, so I appreciate everything you said. Thank you very much.
And thank you again for your continued work and collaboration. So, okay, item 25, abeyance 25-0365, applicant owner Rainbow &amp; DI Limited Liability Company for possible action on the following land use entitlement project requests at the southwest corner of Charleston Boulevard and Strong Drive, Ward 1 Knutson. Staff recommends the denial on the land use entitlement project. 25A, abeyance 25-0365 VAR 1 to allow proposed medical office building that does not conform to Title 19.08 Development Standards for setbacks and residential adjacency. 25B, abeyance 25-0365 SDR 1 for proposed one-story 3,574 square foot medical office development with waivers of building orientation and perimeter landscape buffer requirements. May we have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, plans for proposed development have been revised to provide access from Strong Drive, place the building at the corner, and bring parking to the rear and sides. However, the building fails to meet setback, trash enclosure separation, parking, and landscape buffer standards, indicating that this design is not harmonious and compatible with the adjacent development. Staff therefore recommends denial of the variance in site development plan review, subject to conditions if approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. If you could please state and spell your name for the record and tell us about the project.
Hi, my name is Kerry Shaam, architect with ACG, 4310 Cameron Street, Suite 12A. Yes, we've taken the extra time. This, this project's located in the medical district corridor between Charleston and Strong. It's a, it's a single-story office use building that will be owner occupied, who the owner lives within the area, and he wants to have a, a office that's in close proximity to his home. We have worked along with staff and also Commissioner Rogan to make this project a lot more compliant with the, with the corridor. And by pushing, by locating the building forward along Charleston, and then also providing the 20-foot setback in landscape and pedestrian access to the building. We, we are requesting a few waivers to go along with this, but I think it's important to note that when we're requesting a building setback, that just because we've, we've added some awning enhancements to the, to the building, that's what's going, that's what's within the setback, so that's why we're asking for reduction in setback on Charleston and Strong. But the building foundation is within the required setback, but technically, I do need to ask for the waiver, because the awnings are, are two to three foot, which extend into the setback. I think the overall use of the building is, is real positive for the area. The, this is a currently vacant piece of land, it'll, it'll be developed nicely. We're providing a lot of the tree vegetation on the, on the property. Another, another waiver we are asking for is the, the trash enclosure. We like to set that away from the Charleston Boulevard, so it's not, not in view, to create the best pedestrian experience possible. When we're asking for a waiver for the reduction in landscape on the west side of the property, it's really just because that trash enclosure is one foot off the line. Otherwise, we're providing eight foot of landscape, so it's largely compliant with the code, but technically, I do ask, have to ask for that waiver. With that said, the building is mixed use materials. Again, it's single story. If you have any additional questions, please let me know.
Thank you very much, sir. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard? Okay, seeing none, I will close public hearing, and I will pass it back to the commission, starting with Commissioner Rogan.
Thank you, Chair. The applicant was correct, they worked very closely with me to remove some of the waivers and design challenges that this property had to make it more compliant with the code, especially by orienting the building on the corner of Charleston and Strong, and moving the access from Charleston, where there's a lot of driveway access to Strong. So I think the plan works very well, there's a lot of trees that are being added. The trash enclosure was just a necessity to put that into the required landscape, but it, it works. So unless there's other comments, Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogan. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, sir, go ahead and make your motion.
Thank you, Chair. With that, I make a motion for approval of the item, subject to all of staff's conditions.
And you agree to all conditions, sir?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you. There is a motion on the floor, please cast your vote. And that motion carries with the required supermajority.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, that item, those items will move on to city council on December 17th.
Thank you. Okay, next up, item 21, abeyance 25-0091, applicant Las Vegas Kyle Canyon Covenant Group, LLC, owner Alpine Village LLC. For possible action on the following land use entitlement project requests at the northwest corner of Kyle Canyon Road and Alpine Ridgeway, Ward 6 Bruny. Staff recommends approval on 25-0091 GPA and Z, GPA 1 and ZON 1. Staff recommends denial on 25-0091 SDR 1. 21A, abeyance 25-0091 GPA from PCD Planned Community Development to SC Service Commercial. 21B, abeyance 25-0091 ZON 1 from U undeveloped zone, PCD Planned Community Development, general plan designation to C1 Limited Commercial. 21C, abeyance 25-0091 SDR 1 for proposed one-story 4,300 square foot dental office, 2,500 square foot, 2,500 square foot restaurant with drive-through, and 1,300 square foot general retail development. May I have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, the proposed general plan amendment and rezoning are consistent with the city's long-term planning goals for the Kyle Canyon area, and the design of the proposed development has been revised to be harmonious and compatible with the surrounding area. Staff therefore recommends approval of all requests, subject to conditions on the site development plan review. And I would note that we did receive revisions that enabled staff to recommend approval on the general plan and rezoning, as well as the SDR. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am. If you could please state and spell your name for the record, give us your address, and tell us about the project.
Julie Margatich, M.R., G E T I C H. Address 2044 California Avenue, Corona, California 92881. I'm the architect representing Covenant Group, who's developing this property, which you, was a little piece of property south of all those residential houses, so it's a commercial proposal of about 8,100 square feet, one story with a dental office as the, as the anchor, and a drive-through tenant. Hopefully, we don't have anybody on board right now, just the dental office, but we feel this location will serve all the residents within the area and possibly be, it's very pedestrian friendly with awnings and coverings for a patio. We felt it would be a good fit for the area.
Anything else, Ms. Margatich? Anything else, Ms. Margatich?
I don't think so, unless you have any questions.
Okay, thank you so much. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard? Okay, seeing none, I will close public hearing and turn it back to the commission. Fellow commissioners, anyone have any comments on this item? Okay, all right, I will just have a quick conversation. So, thank you, Ms. Margatich. I know that you worked very hard on making changes to this to accommodate the residences that are nearby, to try to do something unique and a little more visually interesting for this first piece of commercial up Kyle Canyon Road. And I really appreciate you working with me on that. I do think that there could be a little bit more work done on the landscape piece of it, but I certainly don't want to hold this up because you have been waiting to get it moving forward to council. But I would request that you spend some time with the council office, maybe working on bringing some additional trees or landscape buffer or what have you onto the site itself prior to it going before City Council. And that, and, and the perimeter is fantastic. I'm talking about specifically around the building.
Yeah, I saw the staff report. There's additional requirements requested.
Right, yeah. And the, and the, the picture that, you know, the concept that we were working off of that I shared with you and that you're, yeah, thank you for putting that one up because that does do a better depiction of it. Yeah, that, that was what we were talking about. So, again, I appreciate you doing that. Look forward to working with you on some additional projects up Kyle Canyon. And I will make a motion to approve item 21 and its subparts. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Oh, okay. And you agree to all conditions, Ms. Margatich?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you very much. And that does pass with the required supermajority.
And those will move on to City Council on December 17th.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great night. Okay. Now that we have gotten through all of those GPAs, let's go back in order. Item 28, 25-0071 VAR1 applicant Yelaine Freeman-Arias, owner Goafer LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request to allow existing residential home additions that do not conform to Title 19.06 Development Standards for Setbacks at 3520 Miramar Drive, Ward 5 Summers Armstrong. Staff recommends denial. May we have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance related to the physical characteristics of the property has been presented to warrant the requested variance. As such, the hardship is self-imposed, and therefore staff recommends denial, subject to conditions if approved. Please note there are additional documents of protest received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, folks. If you could please state and spell your names for the record, give us your address, and tell us about the project.
Good evening, Madam Chair, person Taylor, commissioners and staff. My name is Al Blasko, living at 203 Genesee Point Henderson, and I'm here to assist the owners on this meeting process. As you see, there's a unique setback waiver they're asking for. They have a corner property, and one of the sides of the house is, has a setback of eight feet where, here, right here, where 15 is required by the code. So I'm going to introduce the owner to let them explain to you the reasons and why they believe they should be granted, as, as possible, this waiver. Go ahead. President.
Hi, my name is Yelaine Freeman. I bought this house in December 2023, and I bought it with that addition, like you say.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jaxel Gonzalez, husband of Yelaine Freeman. So I can testify that the property was that way by the time that it was purchased. We didn't know that it has no setbacks, compliance with the city at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on the project?
I will say that's the only thing that's not in compliance with the code. The rest of the house has architecture features that are same as the existing house, so the waiver is the unique thing.
Okay, thank you very much. This item has been noted for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard? Okay, folks, come on down, step aside, everybody, applicants. Everybody grab a mic, so we can just go in order, two minutes each. Go ahead, sir, with the UNLV hat. Please state your name, spell it. Sir, step away from the microphone, we'll just have the public. Come on, sir, step here at this microphone. Thank you. Go ahead and make your comments.
My name is Tim Navcock. I live at 3524 Miramar Drive. I live right next door to this house. I lived there for 28 years. I have sit there, and this house has been a single-family residence. I am a licensed handyman. I've worked in this house with the last three owners since I've been there. That, he has taken that house. I watched the construction guys come in, bring the stuff in, remodel it, put a lock gate on there with a combination so they could get in for this. That house was never...
Sir, sir, please address the commission. You don't need to address the applicant.
This house was never made out to be a, whatever you call it, or a family, it's a single-family home. And I've been there for 28 years, right next to the house.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
Nope.
Okay, thank you, sir. Sir, in the middle.
Uh, my name's Larry Malakie. I live at 3528 Miramar.
Please just spell your name for the record.
L.A.R.A.M.I.E.
Okay.
L.A.C.K.E.Y.
Thank you.
Um, I live two doors down from this property. I've known the last two property owners, including the, the previous owner before them. And I know this off of MLS, that there hasn't been other owners outside from these two. And I did a lot of the work on the property before it went up for sale on market. And even the, the renderings that you guys have shown earlier with the wet bar in the back room, none of that was there prior to ownership. We have been there for the construction and then chipping up the concrete for multiple months when it was originally purchased to add additions, including like wet areas, bathrooms, and other areas throughout the home to turn into an Airbnb without approval through the city or Airbnb. They lied about the address to get it approved, which has subsequently been reported and has been shut down. And now there are multiple families living in the residence in those previous Airbnb rooms. We've witnessed up to 10 to 11 vehicles outside the residence with multiple different families coming in and out in a single-family residence. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
My name is Gabriel Guzman. I live at 3532 Miramar Drive.
And just again, spell your name for the record.
Gabriel, G.A.B.R.I.E.L. Guzman, G.U.Z.M.A.N. It appears to me as though there are multiple families living at this home. If you go back to the image of the house from the street view, you can actually see that there are multiple entrances. So the gate right here on the right side of the image, there's a private entrance for one of the families to enter. If you go to the shot of facing the house, house straight on, the middle door right there is a separate entrance for another family to get in. And then on the far left side of the same image, you can see a separate gate over there for a third entrance for a different family to get in. So it does cause a lot of concern to have multiple families in a single-family home, all the vehicles that they bring and the foot traffic that adds on to it. And I'm complete.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Sorry, could I add an addition to that?
No, it's okay. Come on back up.
Can I just clarify that the waiver that they are asking is just for the setback on the left structure? Nothing about the rest of the house? It's one setback. If you want to ask the owner about what they just spoke, go ahead.
So, well, we are not compliant with the city right now at the moment is with the setback with the Venice Drive, because the other one, the one in the back, we applied already, it's already been permitted. So we're just working on that one at the moment. And then right after, we want to work for the additional things that we had done outside the property. We have not expanded property at all.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else? All right, I will pass it back to the commission, starting with Commissioner Manford.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Now, this is, this property is held under a corporation?
We just put it on, under a new company. We did a trust.
I'm sorry?
We did a trust on the company.
Okay. It actually says, GOA-FRA LLC? That's not a trust, that's a corporation.
Well, that's LLC under a trust.
So the trust is managing this corporation?
Correct.
Um, now, you said the, when you purchased it, you did not realize the codes in terms of, of using this property as a commercial property and, and also the setbacks and stuff. Weren't, weren't the people that own the corporation the original owners?
She's the one, correct.
Okay, so, and she's part of the corporation?
Correct.
So when the corporation purchased it, the original owners, didn't you had, you didn't have any knowledge as being the original owner of these, these code violations?
No.
Okay. It didn't come up with your, with your realtor or with the, with escrow?
No.
Okay. All right. Um, and from what I understand, too, this property, you've been using it, is, is it, has it been listed on Airbnb? Because I'm hearing...
It was.
It was Airbnb?
It was.
So was, was the main residence or was the additions Airbnb?
Um, the additions.
Okay. And those are, and that Airbnb, you didn't, you didn't have a license to run an Airbnb in that area?
No.
Okay. All right. So, you know, from what I see here, with the, um, hold on, 28. So, in, in turn, and then, can, can I, on staff report, the violations are mainly setback and, and then code, right? Code enforcement in terms of Airbnb?
Yeah, Madam Chair, through you. There's a seven-foot corner yard side setback request where 15 feet is required, and also a seven-foot rear yard setback request where 15 feet is required.
Okay.
Commissioner, I think what you're suggesting, we're voting on the, the setback issue, the code enforcement and/or unlicensed Airbnb is not under consideration for the site.
Is not under this consideration. That's what I was trying to, okay. I'm, I'm going to go along with the recommendation of staff and deny this. It seems, it seems to me that there's, you've been in the property long enough to, you know, to understand that, that, you know, when you, I don't know if, when you bought the property, if you understood that these setbacks were not in line with code. I know, but that's, that's something, you know, and it sounds, sounds like you guys kind of understand real estate because you, you know, you said, and I'm not going to, I don't know that. But I'm just saying, you know, when I, if, when I buy a piece of real estate, it's called due diligence. And so, you know, I don't, like I said, I don't know who your professional was, who your advisors were, and then what your experience is, but I'm going to, I'm going to have to deny this because it's just, you know, I'm just, it just, you know, with, and this has, like I said, I was asking about Airbnb codes. We have a group of people here talking about, you know, people that don't live there going in and out. Like I said, that's not what we're deciding today. But again, I'm going to go with staff recommendation and ask for denial. I think when anybody buys a piece of property, you have to do your due diligence to know and know what you're buying before you buy it. Whether it's through a corporation, and like I said, it looks like you, you had this property before you put it under a corporation. So I'm going to recommend denial.
Any other comments from the commission? Commissioner Lebo?
Um, yes, I, we can assume that this was built unpermitted if it was built outside of the easements. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, through you. I didn't hear the question. Apologize.
Um, can we assume that these additions were built unpermitted if they were built with, outside of the easements?
Easements?
Those setbacks.
Oh, setbacks.
Sorry, the setbacks.
So, yeah, a code enforcement case has been ongoing for the unpermitted structures, knowing that they are not meeting the setbacks, with the understanding that they're not meeting the setbacks.
And Madam Chair, through you to follow up on that, a building permit would not have been issued without an approved variance to allow them to encroach within that setback area. Thank you.
Anything else?
And is it, this, for plan, is this final action or what's the?
Yes, final action.
Oh, so this could be final action, a denial?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, but it would be subject, would be appealable based on a denial. So it's final action, but they can appeal it if, okay. So in, seeing no other comments, go ahead and make your motion officially.
All right, I'd like to make a motion.
Before the motion, can we just be clear on the, Seth, can you just be clear on the appealability to the City Council on that? There was a little confusion.
So if it's, if it's denied in final action tonight, it would be appealable within 10 days to the city clerk.
All right, Madam Chair, through you, I'd like to make a motion for denial on item 28, 25-0071 VAR1. I'd like to make a motion for denial.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. A vote of yes is for denial. Please cast your votes. Please post. And that motion denying the request for variance does pass.
And that is final action tonight unless appealed to the city clerk in 10 days.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 20, item 29, 25-0269 applicant Las Vegas Museum of Art, owner City Parkway Vibe Inc., for possible action on the following land use entitlement project requests located east of the City Parkway and Symphony Park Avenue intersection, Ward 5 Summers Armstrong. Staff recommends approval on the land use entitlement project 29A, 25-0269BAC1 for petition to vacate a roadway easement. 29B, 25-0269SDR1 for proposed four-story 59,782 square-foot museum development with waivers of the Symphony Park design standards. May we have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, the proposed museum development is identified in the Vision 2045 Downtown Las Vegas Master Plan as a tool to complement the arts-related offerings near downtown, which would further strengthen downtown Las Vegas's cultural role. Therefore, staff finds the proposed development is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding area and recommends approval of the site development plan review and petition to vacate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening. If you could please state and spell your names for the record, give us your address, and tell us about this project.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for your time tonight. Heather Harmon, H.E.A.T.H.E.R., H.A.R.M.O.N., 840 Rancho Drive, Suite 4-328, 89106. Delighted to be in a tree bait zip code. I'm also the executive director of the Las Vegas Museum of Art and here with my colleague and collaborator Melissa Weigel. and collaborator, Melissa Weigle of Carey Architecture. We promise to be short and sweet and very respectful of your time. The Las Vegas Museum of Art will be the first standalone art museum in Las Vegas. We are the largest city in the nation without one, and we are about to change that. Technical difficulty? There we go. Located in Symphony Park and in partnership with the City of Las Vegas and the Los Angeles County Museum of Art, we will bring this landmark building designed by Pritzker laureate Francis Carey to this incredible community in 2029. In addition to this extraordinary museum, we will develop a generous outdoor sculpture park with ample space for gathering. We are grateful for this partnership and for the vision of Elaine Nguyen, who brought this project to life. And a big thank you to economic development and redevelopment manager Tracy Reich and her team, who are incredible stewards of this project. We ask you to follow staff's recommendation for approval of 25-0269-SDR1 and VAC1. There are a number of items on this list, and we're happy to address any of your individual concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard? Okay, seeing none, I will close this item. I'm gonna do it a little bit differently this time when I pass it to the commission, and I'm gonna pass it to Commissioner Lebo or Commissioner Schlotman for any comments first.
Thank you. I just want to say, this is a really exciting, beautiful project. Thank you for bringing this to the city of Las Vegas. I just think it's very unique. I'm in the field of architecture as well, and so it's always good to see the investment in downtown Las Vegas. So I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schlotman?
Yes, I remember many of years ago, I think, there was talks about this originally going down the Arts District on that triangle piece of property, and then it, then was moved over to Symphony Park, which I feel that Symphony Park is, is appropriate spot for this, even though I, I have a love for the Arts District and that's where I build and I'm seeing so much stuff happen. But I, I think Symphony Park, it, it fits really well with everything that's been built down there, the Children's Museum, Symphony, the Symphony Center, the Smith Center and everything else. And, and, and when do you think you'll have funding? And when do you think we might be able to see a shovel in the ground?
So we anticipate putting a shovel in the ground in around summer of 2027 and opening in 2029, and we are well on our way with very successful fundraising to bring this museum to life.
Perfect. Well, congratulations and look forward to seeing this finally get built.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to echo my fellow commissioners on how exciting it is to have this project coming into downtown. I'm just watching the, the metamorphosis of that piece of land from when the Smith Center was built to, you know, seeing all the pieces built out. I just, I can't wait to go and see an art exhibit there. So thank you guys so much, and I will pass it to Commissioner Manford.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just to echo everybody else's excitement and approval, I'm very excited to see this Las Vegas Museum of Art project. And just one question. Is, is there gonna be representation and therefore like ethnic art such, you know, I'm part Native American, Native American art, African American art, you know, the different cultures that we have in this city?
Absolutely. We have an amazing partnership with the Los Angeles County Museum of Art, which gives us access to encyclopedic collections of art that include everything from ancient to modern, from decorative to design. So it's always been our goal and really part of our constitution to bring that to Las Vegas, art from all periods of time, representing all geographies.
Very excited. Thank you. So through you, Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion.
Please do.
I would like to make a motion for approval for item number 29, 25-0269. I would like to make a motion for approval, subject to all conditions, and you're fine with all conditions?
Yes.
Thank you.
And there is a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes and please post, and very excited to say that that motion passes. Thank you so much, ladies. Can't wait to have this get started.
And that is final action tonight unless appealed to the city clerk in 10 days.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, item 30 is abated. Item 31, 25-0363SDR1, applicant owner Iona LLC for possible action on the land use entitlement project request for a proposed parking facility with waivers of appendix F interim downtown Las Vegas development standards, Area 1, on the east side of Fourth Street, approximately 150 feet north of Gas Avenue, Ward 3 Diaz. Staff recommends approval. May I have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, the subject site is appropriate for a parking facility and meets the need for infill development in the civic and business district. The proposed eight-foot-tall fence at the site frontage will provide security but will not impede views into the site. The requested waivers are minor and will not detract from the existing pattern of development in this area. Staff therefore recommends approval, subject to conditions. Please note there were additional documents of protest and support received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, sir. If you could please state and spell your name for the record, give us your address and tell us about this project.
All righty. Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow commissioners. My name is Matthew Selkirk. Last name is S-E-L-K-I-R-K. I'm with Kim Lee Horn, representing Iona on this application. Address is 6671 Las Vegas Boulevard South, Suite 320. So for this project, we have worked with staff to plan this EV charging location with small amenity building. It's planned to be 14 EV charging stalls with a, a two restroom building and vending machine, and I believe in a, a park bench for recreation while patrons are waiting to charge. And I'm happy to answer any questions from staff.
Great. Thank you so much. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard? Come on up.
Thank you, chairperson commissioners. My name's Greg Kope, spelled K-O-P-P-E. I am the property owner next door to this proposed site at 711 South Fourth Street. I'll be brief. I just wanted to show the, everyone. So this is my office right next door, and I have been inundated with homeless issues for the last, I would say, 22 years since I've been there. And any structure whatsoever that's unattended is a constant battle moving people along, as you might know or have heard. And my concern is that what is proposed is all of this covered parking is gonna be unattended, unsupervised, monitored remotely by camera at best, and is going to create the ideal circumstances that I have been fighting against, which is homeless encampments forming. And even on this very lot, I have had the, the difficult challenge of, of running homeless people off of this vacant lot even before any development, and that's with a fence all the way around. Now, for some reason, the pictures that have been submitted are a little deceiving, unintentionally, I would imagine. There is no fence along the back, only the pictures show it, but when you read the writing, and I got all of this very last minute, so I'm asking for more time to actually get into more of the details. For some reason, I got notice almost in no time to really go into everything. But, but my concern first and foremost is the homeless situation that's gonna be completely out of control when there's the ability to sleep under something, even if lit. The, the second concern I have is this bathroom shack. It's almost the polar opposite of the museum we just saw. I don't understand why the two doors to the bathroom are facing so that drivers can see it on the one-way Fourth Street and prominent right at the front and not the back. But in all fairness, even if you put it in the back, unattended bathrooms and vending machines are like the ideal attractive nuisance for homeless gathering. And even back in the back with no fence along the back, there's gonna be a homeless issue. One last thing, I was required on my front fence to only go six feet and to have piers, masonry piers every 10 feet, and so was the neighbor on the other side. And you can see the piers in the picture that was submitted. I think he should be limited to the same height and peer requirement that we were, and for him to characterize it as a security need on a fence that has an open driveway is a bit deceptive, and again, unintentionally so. I am not saying it was malfeasant. I just think it's deceptive, and he should be held to the same standard, and I don't think it meets the waiver requirements under Nevada law.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kope.
Thank you.
Anybody else for this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close public hearing. I will pass it back to the commissions, starting with Commissioner Schlotman. Oh, yes, I do want to give you a second to answer any questions. Thank you, Commissioner Schlotman.
I guess I, I missed a question there, but yes, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions.
No, did you, did you want to respond to anything that Mr. Kope said?
I don't believe at this time, no.
Okay.
Okay. Madam Chair, through you. And I, Mr. Kope, I appreciate the email. I, I got it along with about probably 75 other emails in regards to stuff, and I was covered up, so I, I didn't have a chance to respond. But I did read your email, and I'll forward it to the city clerk, so it'll be on the record. So thank you for sending that out. The, I guess, I do have a couple of questions for you. If you could address the first question about the eight-foot fence on the front of the property, if, and if we can go to, on the, to this, back to the photo of the front of this property, so we could take a look at that. And, actually. And I, I think it was one of the other images that we had up a second ago. But while we're coming around to, to that particular image of the front of the building, so the bathrooms that you're gonna have on this is, how is that gonna work? It's not just gonna be open all the time. Is there gonna be some, well, I would hope that it wouldn't be just hope, open all the time. Will there be some kind of code? And, and this facility, let me get clear, is, this facility is gonna be a paid facility. If I owned a Tesla, I would be able to pull up their electric vehicle, I would be able to pull up there and pay to charge my vehicle. Is that correct?
Correct. It'll be a paid facility, open to all EV owners and operators. As far as the restrooms go, no, that they will be restricted access to a key code that's available in the Iona app.
Okay. So if you, if you have the app and you're charging your vehicle, you'll be able to go in there?
Yes.
Okay. And then, do you have a fence on the back of the property, or is that open?
Uh, no, the, the rear of the property is fenced, as Mr. Kope showed in the, the image he had presented. The front of the property will be an open driveway with fencing on either side, along with the required landscaping.
Okay. So you, you intend on keeping the fence on the back of the property?
Yes.
Okay. And then the front will be open. And I guess homelessness is something that we deal with all the time. I, I live downtown, I've lived downtown since 2005. I, I've built in downtown since 2005, and it's a constant challenge. You know, even underneath the staircase going up to my, my garage, I mean, up to my office, people sleep underneath there. So there's gonna have to be some sort of diligence with trying to mitigate that issue. I, I do understand the shade structures, and I do understand the need. I mean, we either have to have trees or we have to have shade structures or something for these cars and parking lots to have mitigation of these, of the heat and the heat island effect downtown. One of the other points in Mr. Kope's email was that his sign could be blocked. But with the new buildings that we're building and encouraging buildings to be built all the way up to the, the front property line, if there is any other law firm or bar, restaurant or anything being built due to the placement of where that prop, where that sign is, close to that property line, I think that that is, would eventually be, be covered one way or another. I'm still trying to figure out the, the eight-foot fence on the front of the property, and it just doesn't seem like we.
Fence the slide. I don't believe we have an eight-foot fence on the front. There, there's an eight-foot fence on the rear of the property.
Oh, it's eight-foot fence on the rear?
Yes. The, the Fourth Street is going to be open driveway and landscaping.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Ma, Madam Chair, through you. Our site plan shows an eight-foot fence at the front of the property and no fence at the rear of the property. So I just want to make sure that you're voting with that understanding, and that's the reason for the waiver.
I'm sorry, Steve, you are correct.
Okay, thank you.
And the front of this property is on Fourth Street, is that correct?
That is.
Okay. So I'm, I'm still trying to figure out.
I apologize. I, I had the, the property mirrored in my head when I, when I answered your previous question.
So is the intention for people to come through the alley to access this property or?
No, the intention is to access via Fourth Street.
Okay. So they access via Fourth Street, and you have an eight-foot fence, but it's also open. And then there's a fence or no fence on the back?
I believe no fence. Sorry, I had that backwards on. I apologize.
That's correct. No fence in the rear.
I, I don't believe that I really understand this good enough, and I don't think the applicant understands this good enough. I want to hold this in advance for 30 days so I can understand what's going on. Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to make a, well, I'll give you the option, I can, we can vote, but I can't vote on a, on, on project.
No, we're, we're, we're open to holding it for 30 days.
Okay. Because I'm in support of what you're, what you're doing, and I'm in support of having more electrical vehicle charging stations down here. I just don't understand what's going on with this fence. And in my head, I, before I come in, I was thinking it was in the back, and so did you. So let's, uh, reach out to me before the next, well, not before the next planning commission, let's reach out like to me next week, and let's sit down, let's talk, let's understand this, and that way, if we have to make any modifications, we can make any modifications. And if you don't mind, if you wouldn't mind exchanging telephone numbers with the Greg Kope back here, just to see if there's anything that, any questions you can answer with him prior to the next hearing?
Absolutely.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So Madam Chair, on item number 31, a move to hold this in advance to the next planning commission hearing, which is, is December 9th.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Please post, and that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will see you back here, sir. All right, item 32, 25-0364, applicant owner Harold Plumbing and Heating, Inc., for possible action on the following land use entitlement project requests on the east side of 13th Street, approximately 100 feet south of Mesquite Drive, Ward 5, Summers Armstrong. Staff recommends denial on the land use entitlement project 32A, 25-0364VAR1 to allow two parking spaces where 13 are required, 32B, 25-0364SDR1 for proposed two-story, seven-unit, multifamily residential development with waivers of the perimeter landscape buffer requirements. May we have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, staff finds the variance of parking standards and waivers the perimeter landscape buffer requirements to be self-imposed, resulting in a development that is not harmonious or compatible with the surrounding area. Staff therefore recommends denial of the requested variance in site development plan review, subject to conditions if approved. Please note there were additional documents of support received after publication. Thank you.
Good evening, sir. If you could please state and spell your name for the record, give us your address and tell us about this project.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. My name is Tal Harrel, H-A-R-E-L, 362 North 13th Street. My name is Tal Harrel, H-A-R-E-L, 362 North 13th Street. I'm here request, I'm here requesting approval variance and site development review for the modest seven-unit multifamily home on a small 6,000-square-foot lot parcel on 13th Street. This project redevelops a lot that has been vacant since 2018. It brings new housing, reduces heat island impact, and supports the very walkable, vibrant urban environment the city says it wants in this part of Las Vegas. The staff report acknowledges that this neighborhood at proximity to downtown is exactly where the city encourages higher density and reduced parking. Your own adopted plans calls for reduced surface parking and improving walkability. Our project executes this directly, exactly, directive, exactly. The primary obstacle is parking. This hardship is not self-created. The size, width, and shape of the lot have existed for decades. I did not create the constraints, but I'm proposing a responsible solution. Even so, we are minimizing car use, we're providing bike parking, pedestrian access, and a design that encourages walkability. Public works confirmed that the traffic impact is extremely small, three cars in peak hour, or about one car every 20 minutes. The city's redevelopment goals are clear: encourage infill, encourage density, and reduce surface parking. The staff reports repeats this multiple times, yet the variance is recommended for denial, even though the project checks every one of these policy boxes. There's also clear precedence, there has been previous applications that were approved for no parking, a lot bigger projects in this, in this area. The building is compatible with the neighborhood. Staff agrees that architecture meets Title 19 standards, the materials are appropriate, and the height is consistent with surrounding one- and two-story homes. While there is a request for waiver of the landscape buffer width, the project is approved will provide 20 additional trees where only 12 are required, which is support the city goal to combat the heat island effect by significantly improving the shadow or the shade canopy on all sides of the property where this is current, where currently there is done. This project brings seven new homes, seven places where families can live, work, and be part of our community without adding congestion or burden to the neighborhood. Commissioners, this variance and these waivers allow the site to be productive again. Without them, this parcel will remain undeveloped indefinitely, since no project can physically meet Title 19 on such a constrained lot. I'm asking you tonight to support housing, support small infill, support walkability, and support consistency with your own past approvals. I respectfully request your approval of variance A, variance one, and SDR1. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard? Please come down, grab a microphone, state and spell your name for the record, and you'll have two minutes.
Hi, can you hear me okay? Bruce Cowan, I own a lot of properties down there, two on 13th, two on 14th, three on 15th, and I support this.
Great.
I would like to explain why briefly. Although I can see the staff's position, the two spots is tough, but we need these kind of, these developments. We need them. The properties that I have, I like to store older properties that are, I believe, are historical, and I've, we've had about six, seven murals painted on them, and I think that that neighborhood is becoming a pretty exciting place. I do want to point out that there is a bus stop nearby with, very, nearby. And I think filling an empty lot, which draws the homeless in, with a beautiful, new, vibrant, exciting piece of architecture into that neighborhood is, is, is welcome. I, I, I think that there's a concern maybe about, from staff, about the parking situation, but we, I think most residents would rather have people that live there parking there than homeless just parking campers, or vans, or, you know, all the unregistered vehicles on the street. So I don't see the parking as being that negative of a factor. Again, you know, maybe add a couple spaces, but I don't think you want to hinder these kind of developments. I think you want to get behind them. And, and that's pretty much all I want to say. I think, if you've seen his other developments that he's done, he's added a lot of excitement. I mean, it's eclectic, there's new and there's, and there's old. There's new, exciting architecture, and we're restoring the older properties. And I, if you haven't been around North 8th, North 7th, North 8th, North 9th, North 10th, North 13th, North 14th, North 15th, you might want to take a look at it, you might want to invest, because it's a hot neighborhood, and he's part of why.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to make public comment on this? Okay, seeing none, I will turn, oh, no, sorry, anything you wanted to add?
I have done three projects within this vicinity. I built two condo units on 14th Street. I just got done building three cottages on 13th Street. So I own a lot of land on 13th in that area, and we just want to develop it and give affordable housing. We want to get rid of the homeless. I mean, I understand that they have nowhere to go, but if we can revive this area, it's, it's endless of opportunities.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, with that, I will pass it back to the commission, take the rest of the commissioners before I pass it to Commissioner Munford. Anything, Commissioner Lobo?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I think this is a really nice project on a really tight site. I'm just curious, how do you decide who gets the parking?
I will cross that bridge when we get to that point.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, Madam Chair, through you. Just a couple of comments. I know that you come before us, four or five years ago, maybe six years ago, with the project, and, and it was your couple of duplexes that you built on, on 14th Street. And I looked at it and seen a plumber, and I was like, what's this guy going to build? And you built something pretty cool over there. And then here recently, I just had the opportunity to look at, we're analyzing tiny homes and macedos and planning, said, hey, you should go reach out to Harold and go walk his little tiny home project. And I know it's not technically, I don't think it's technically a tiny home project, but it's damn near a tiny home project. It's, I mean, what are they, like, 500, 600, 800?
They're three separate, single-family, 600 square feet, two stories, three separate units.
And they were, they were cool. I mean, they were really cool. And it's on that little triangle property, if you look at the map, just next door, it's a leftover piece from the highway that nothing could be built on. Like, I don't know how you got it on there, but.
I will tell you how, thanks to you, and to this commission, and this board, and the planning commission, and everybody that comes with, the fire department, Public Works, it's, it can be done.
But you didn't throw, throw up just some cheap, trashy-looking building. They, they, they look cool. I mean, people would be proud to live in there. And then what you're planning on doing here, and when you brought me over there a few months ago to show me this, and you told me about this project, there were some homeless in that cul-de-sac and everything, and, you know, you get people living in here, you get people parking around that cul-de-sac, and you get more activity in this area, and it's just going to help continue cleaning it up. I can't believe you're on your third project over here, and so, and I applaud you. And you're doing good, you're leasing them up, you're going to sell them, or you sold some of them. And anyways, I, I'd like to see you continue building over here, and I know, I know I'll see you back here. And so, anyways, congratulations, and you have my support, you've proven yourself, unlike a lot of other people in this town.
Thank you. I just, the elevations on these, proposed elevations are really nice-looking, so I just think it's a great project. But I just had a question on the trees. They're not going in your shrunken landscape buffers, are they? Because I don't know how a tree would do well in.
I actually brought one of, a bigger project. So they're, like I said, they're going to be, we're going to be putting 20, 20 trees, or only I think 12 is required, but I'm all about landscape, I'm all about, you know, putting as much as we can where we can. And I worked with planning on that, and they're the ones that suggested the 20 versus the 12 that's required. And so we said, look, we're going to put 22, 23, 24. If we can put more, we'll put more. I'm all for it. I'd rather have trees than have nothing.
I am in full agreement with you. I'm just concerned, I just wanted to make sure that you're not, if you're planting trees in that two-foot landscape buffer, how you were going to make sure they, that they were able to thrive?
Hire a professional landscaper to do that.
Okay, fine, fine idea. Okay, Commissioner Munford?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. You know, we talked, and, and I also talked to the councilwoman's assistant about this, and I know for Ward 5 and our whole community, we need, especially downtown, I appreciate what Commissioner Trinity, what you said. You know, downtown, I think, is an exciting area for Las Vegas, and especially our smaller developers. I think there's a great opportunity for, for our smaller developers to do this kind of, both, I guess you could call it boutique-style development that, that, you know, especially, I see this as coming at a, and at a price point, you know, especially when Vegas has become so expensive. And we need, you know, we need this, you know, our, our small businesses are always innovators, and that's what I see you. I see you innovating and providing a product out there that our community needs. And so, we talked, you know, we're going to, I'm going to move to make a motion to approve this, and it's going to go on to council, and I understand that you're, you're working with the councilwoman. And I'm excited about the stuff that you're doing, and let's, let's make this happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote, and please post, and that motion carries, and you agree to all conditions.
I do.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
And that item will move on to City Council on December 17th.
And given that we're at 8:30, I would like to just take a quick break, so we'll be back in five. Okay, planning commission is called back to order. Let's move on to item number 33, 25-0375 VAR1, applicant Ebby Iron Designs LLC. Owner Abusham Properties LLC for possible action on a land use entitlement project request to allow an existing six-foot-tall front yard fence where five feet is the maximum height allowed at 2,100 South Decatur Boulevard. Ward 1 Knutson staff recommends denial.
For possible action on a land use entitlement project request to allow an existing six-foot-tall front yard fence where five feet is the maximum height allowed at 2100 South Decatur Boulevard, Ward One Knutson. Staff recommends denial. Can I have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance related to the physical characteristics of the property has been presented to warrant the requested variance. As such, the hardship is self-imposed, and therefore, staff recommends denial of the request. Please note, an additional documentation of support was received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. If you could please state and spell your names for the record, give us your address, and tell us about this project.
My name is Connie Harris, C-O-N-N-I-E-H-A-R-R-I-S. I'm here for EB Iron Designs, E-B-Y, Iron Designs 909 Walnut Drive in Boulder City. I'm here on behalf of Carvana, with a business located at 2100 South Decatur, to request a variance for the wall fence standard entitled 1908-080-C2. Just super quick, by way of background, of how we got here. Carvana had called a fire inspection on a building they had out there, and the fire inspector noticed there was no padlocks, Knox padlocks, led him ultimately to realize there was no permit. We were then hired to... There it goes.
Did I do that?
The plan's examiner kicked it back because the, there was, the fence, as you can see, is five foot nine inches tall, and the setback is not within 10 feet of the property line. It is, though, I would note, 10 feet from the roadway. As I went through the prongs, I guess I would call them, of this title, it seems to me like this meets all of them, even though I realize it is obviously a variance. So, A, to ensure that new development will not negatively impact the use and enjoyment of neighboring properties. This fence is obviously very nice-looking, does not in any way negatively impact the use and enjoyment of neighboring properties. The fact that a five-foot-nine-inch fence versus the allowed five-inch fence surrounds the property has no bearing whatsoever on neighboring businesses to use and enjoy their own. It's not a solid wall, so it's not, you know, some giant CMU wall or whatever. You can obviously see through it. Those are four-inch spaced pickets all the way around. It's powder coated, so it's not to rust. It's a very high-quality fence. It also is, besides being aesthetically pleasing both to that property and the neighboring properties, you know, elevating the neighborhood, it's serving to keep out the homeless issue that they had. It's obviously gonna help prevent vandalism and, you know, all of those things. Where a five-foot fence, you know, I mean, it's better than nothing, but I don't, it doesn't, it's not much of a deterrent. B, to ensure that new development will contribute to the overall attractiveness of the city. This fencing most definitely contributes to the overall attractiveness of the property. Conversely, having a fence that's nine inches shorter to the required five feet tall does not contribute more to the overall attractiveness of the city. C, to increase design compatibility between abutting properties and land uses. While I can't say that this five-foot-nine-inch fence design increases compatibility, neither would a five-foot fence do that either. D, to reinforce a sense of community to preserve the integrity of neighborhoods and places of business. I don't really know if there's a sense of community necessarily in that kind of a neighborhood. They're far-spaced-out businesses. But I certainly, you could certainly argue that the integrity of the neighborhood is elevated. I mean, you know, if everybody had that in that neighborhood, it would look better. And finally, E, to reduce unsightly views. Again, by any standard equality, you know, this kind of a fence and gates enhances the neighborhood. So, obviously, you know, there have to be codes and rules and things to follow, but I think there are, have to be exceptions, too. And I think that this is a prime example of what an exception should be, like a reason for a variance. And that's what I have. This is Emily Garcia from Carvana. In the event you have any questions about Carvana.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am. This item has been noted for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard? Okay, seeing none, I will close public hearing. I will pass this back to the commission. I'm gonna start with, well, I'm gonna see Commissioner Lubbo or Commissioner Mumford, any ideas, questions on this item?
Thank you, ma'am chair. I do have a question. Is there, is there a neighboring property that has a fence at the same height or differing height?
No, there's no fenced properties anywhere around there.
Okay, okay. So, it's just this site in and of itself?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, Madam Chair, through you. I don't see a problem with this. It's nine inches over. It's, it, I've seen fences that were created that looked horrible. This, nobody will know the difference between it being five foot or five foot nine. For those reasons, I'd be willing to support this. And there's no other comments. I'm ready to make a motion.
Please do.
Yes, Madam Chair, based on the testimony heard tonight, on item 33, 25-0375-VAR1, move to approve, subject to staff's conditions, and you agree to all staff's conditions of approval?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Please post, and that motion carries.
And that is final action. Let's appeal to the city clerk in 10 days.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, just the last chat. Did you ask her about conditions? You agreed to all the conditions?
Yes, I did.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, item 34, 25-0385-VAR1, applicant owner Jorge Brian Lau Berias. For possible action on a land use entitlement project request to allow existing residential accessory structure shed and carport that do not conform to Title 19.06 Development Standards and for setbacks, separation, aesthetic compatibility and placement, and an existing front yard wall that exceeds height standards at 15 North Arlington Street. May I have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance related to the physical characteristics of the property has been presented to warrant the requested variance. As such, the hardship is self-imposed, and therefore, staff recommends denial of the request. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, go ahead, please. State your, state and spell your name for the record, give us your address, and tell us about the project. And please speak into the microphone so that we can all hear you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, person, and also Commissioner. My name is Jorge Lau, by living 15 North Arlington Street. So, well, first of all, I want to say sorry. I mean, as a first owner, I didn't, like, have idea about how was the process to be able to build these items at home. And also, first of all, one of the things that kind of, like, pushed me to do is for safety reasons. In the back of my house, I do have the city wash. I had issues with the homeless. As soon as we moved over there, while in my left side, the house was completely empty. Also, the house has a hole in the back of the wall, which is facing the wash, so it was really easy to the homeless to be now able to go to that property and also, like, jump to my size, because in the back, we just have, like, a wood fence. And also, I lost many of my tools that I used to be able to work and bring, you know, the support to my family, because they just jumped in and be stealing things. That's why I decided to be able to do the storage and also the wall division. Obviously, I had a conversation with the neighbors. It was an issue with that. They told me that was totally fine. They know the issue that we had over there with the homeless. Also, well, I just moved to this stage, so I was like looking with the neighbor that they have a wall, even the storage, if they do have their recommendation about it. They helped me to see, or to find a right person to did all of these things in my house. And also, well, the only thing that I knew in that moment, I had to respect is don't be attached to the house. So, that is pretty much like why I have to kind of, like, move forward with all these things, a safety reason for my family. And also, I don't feel that I have been putting, like, something that makes my neighborhood looks bad. And also, I took the time to go to some of the houses, explain to my neighbors my case, and also be able to get some signature. The neighbor were like supporting me about this case. I was explaining then the whole situation about it. I just pretty much, like, asking for some, this possible exception with the wall, it's just, like, I guess, six inches taller. And also, as I said, the carport and the storage is not attached to the home, so I'm not modifying, I'm not doing any modification to the original, oh, house.
Okay, thank you, sir. This item has been noted for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard? Okay, seeing none, I will close public hearing. I will pass it back to the commission, starting with Commissioner Schlotman.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I have no problem with the wall. It almost meets code, and if it's because of the pillars or whatever, I don't care about that. It, that, that seems to be harmonious and compatible with everything else in the neighborhood. Why does your storage shed have to be so close to the house? It looks like it's, it's not a stick built in place. It looks like it's maybe a Home Depot shed or something like that that you put back there?
Oh, well, to be honest, at the beginning, I was trying to get, you know, the one for Home Depot, but was really requiring, like, many another parts, so, oh, hi, oh, hi, someone...
Let me ask you this. Is this a shed that you can move back away from the house a couple of feet? You can drag it?
Oh, that was then my main concern, because, I mean, it's like, let's say, like, what's built over the concrete to be able to be stable, you know?
Okay.
And also, my first, like, if I move it, I can destroy it, and also, I mean, this day is pretty, like, expensive to redo it.
Do you live in a duplex?
Oh, it's, no, it's not duplex. It's actually a townhouse.
A townhouse, so it's an attached townhouse. And your neighbor, just to the side of you, that is in the attached townhouse, do they have a problem with your storage shed?
No, not at all. And also, he has a storage that, he is the one who told me that that was a good idea, because I told him, like, my situation with the tools and all my belongings that were installed by the homeless at the moment, and I was kind of afraid to keep losing.
All right. Well, look, I don't have as big of an issue with the storage shed or the wall, but the carport, it has to go. I can't get behind it. There's not a one person in that neighborhood that has one of those. And it's not, it, it doesn't meet our code, doesn't meet our standards, it doesn't look compatible and harmonious with anything in the neighborhood, it's not compatible with your own house, it sticks out like a sore thumb, and I don't want to see these just getting built on every other lot in that neighborhood, because we have areas in my ward where we have these carports starting to go up illegally. I mean, because if you did it legally, you would find out that you would never, never been able to build it. And I've been against them since, since the beginning of time, and you're not gonna get my support on that. So, you can get my support on the wall, on the storage shed setbacks, but you're not gonna be able to get my support tonight on that front carport.
Oh, well, these are a couple ones around the area, but I completely...
I've looked around your neighborhood. I don't see them. I don't like it. I don't want it. So, if you want my support on the other things, that's gonna end up having to come down. We can see if anybody else has any other comments.
Sure. Any other comments from the rest of the commission on this item? Okay, no other comments, Commissioner?
Because if anybody else comes up from the neighborhood asking for my support on that, they're not gonna get it either. So, but anyways, so, on, if I can go to plan, see if we can change a couple of conditions?
Madam Chair, through you, we would need to change conditions of approval, numbers one, two, three, and four, to state a variance is denied. Would you like, for the clerks, would you like me to read each condition? Condition number one is a variance is denied to allow an existing residential accessory structure carport located in front of the primary structure where such is not allowed. Number two, a variance is hereby denied to allow a two-foot side yard setback for an existing residential accessory structure carport where three feet is required. A variance, or number three, a variance is hereby denied to allow an existing residential accessory structure carport to not be aesthetically compatible with the principal dwelling unit where such is required. And condition of approval number four, a variance is hereby denied to allow a zero-foot separation from the main building for an existing residential accessory structure carport where six feet is required. Thank you.
Thank you. And this would allow them to keep, keep the fence at the current height and the storage shed?
Madam Chair, through you, yes, because then we have conditions of approval five and six address the shed, six, five, six, and seven address the shed, and then condition of approval number eight addresses the wall.
Okay, thank you. And Madam Chair, through you, you agree with striking conditions one through four, which means that you'll get rid of that shed, and you agree to the other conditions of approval. Are there any other conditions of approval? Does he need to submit for permits or anything, or this is too small?
Madam Chair, through you, the shed is too small, so it just needed to meet the setbacks and the aesthetic compatibility. Now, we do have a variance for the aesthetic compatibility. Did you want the applicant to paint it to match the house?
Would you be willing to paint the shed to match your house?
Absolutely.
Okay, it sounds like he wants to.
All right, Madam Chair, then we will also need to, let's see, let's update, number, condition of approval number five, to read a variance is hereby denied to allow an existing residential accessory structure shed to not be aesthetically compatible with the primary, with the principal dwelling unit where such is required, which that would then, if he painted it to match the house, that would satisfy that condition.
And you're fine with that? Okay, thank you. All right, Madam Chair, ready to make a motion?
Please do.
On item 34, 25-0385-VAR1, move to approve, and with striking conditions one through four, and with...
Madam Chair, through you, we're not striking. We've just changed them to read that they're denied. So, he will have to then remove the carport. Those portions of the variance are denied.
With amended those conditions to state that they are denied?
Yeah.
And that's on one, two, three, four, and five?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
No, I'm, yeah, one, two, three, and four address the carport, which with those being denied, he will be required to remove the carport.
Yes.
Number five is denied for the aesthetic compatibility for the shed, which he has agreed to paint it so it'll match the house. And then, seven and eight will, seven addresses the shed setback, and number eight addresses the wall height.
So, my motion stands, motion for, motion for approval with condition, with the amended conditions or the conditions one through five being denied. You agree, sir, correct?
Yes.
You agree to, agree to everything that we just spoke about?
Yeah, well, basically, just paint the, the storage.
Yeah, paint the storage shed, keep the wall, and take out the carport. Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry, can you be about the wall?
You can keep the wall.
Okay.
Paint the storage shed.
Okay.
And take down the carport.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Please post, and that motion carries.
And that is final action tonight. Let's appeal to the city clerk in 10 days.
Thank you. Item number 35, 25-0402, applicant owner, Humair Zahid Monique de Jacquesage Township Family Trust. For possible action on the following land use entitlement project request at the southwest corner of Ann Road and Schaumburg Road. Ward four, Alan Polinsky. Staff recommends denial on the land use entitlement project. 35A, 25-0402-VAR1, to allow a 15-foot residential adjacency setback where 87 feet is required, Building Three. 35B, 25-0402-SDR1, for a major amendment to an approved site development plan review. 24-0167-SDR1, for proposed one-story 2,878 square foot expansion of an approved one-story 12,200 square foot commercial development. May we have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, while the proposed building modifications and elevations are consistent with the approved commercial development, staff finds the hardship related to the requested adjacency setback variance to be self-imposed, and the resulting development not to be compatible with adjacent residential development. Staff therefore recommends denial of the variance in site development plan review, subject to conditions if approved. And please note, there were additional documents of protest received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. If you could please state and spell your name for the record, tell us your address, and tell us about the project.
Yes, good evening. My name is Majid Khatir. That's K-H-A-T-E-R, 50... Yes, good evening. My name is Majid Khatir. That's K-H-A-T-E-R, fifty East Serene Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-two-three. I am the architect on this project. So, as you see, this project was approved for a drive-through with a fifteen-foot old landscape buffer. When we presented this item about a year ago, there was some protest and concerns over the drive-through use and the adjacency to the residential area. And there are some conditions where discussed and put into not having a cold box because of the noise issues for the residential areas. And at that time, we kind of promised to go back and consider changing this to our commercial type of building. And I think we got the approval, keeping that in mind. So once we went back and kind of started looking into our tenants and usage of the property, it looked more suitable to change the building into our commercial use, basically matching the approved building here. So basically, we just made this building bigger, including the drive-through lanes into the building. So our setbacks or, and our buffer, landscape buffer, is the same, has not changed. Actually, we think we made the property, actually, the mitigated the adjacency to the residential area by removing the drive-through lanes, by removing the cold box, by removing the drive-through type of use, and go to back to our commercial, matching the building next to it. So we believe this is actually making the project better than, listen back to, I believe, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. I will pass it back to the commission. This is in Ward four. Commissioner Kasama is excused tonight. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Commissioner LeBeau?
Yes. The supporting documentation that I currently have does not match what he has on the screen here.
No, this is what I have here. It's the old.
Okay, so the supporting documentation we currently have in the packet does not show a drive-through at all. Is that correct? Okay.
So this is what we are asking for.
That is. Okay, perfect. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you for walking through the changes on this. I think that we can go ahead and make a motion. Did you have any questions, Commissioner? Okay. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the variance in the site design review for item twenty-five-dash-oh-four-oh-two. So there is a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Please post. And so that is for thirty-five, item thirty-five, twenty-five dash-oh-four-oh-two, thirty-five A, item twenty-five dash-oh-four-oh-two-VAR-one, and thirty-five B, twenty-five dash-oh-four-oh-two-SDR. And you agree to all conditions, sir?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks. That motion, did we post?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion carries?
And that is final action. Let's appeal to the city clerk in ten days.
Thank you. Item thirty-six, twenty-five dash-oh-four-one-one-VAR-one, applicant Holly Siciliano, owner Siciliano Family Trust, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request to allow a proposed ten-foot solid block wall where five feet with a two-foot solid base is the maximum allowed in the front yard at two-three-one-five Alta Drive, Ward one Knutson. Staff recommends denial. May I have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, no evidence of the unique or extraordinary circumstance related to the physical characteristics of the property has been presented to warrant the requested variance. As such, the hardship is self-imposed, and therefore, staff recommends denial of the request. Please note, an additional documentation of protest was received after publication. Thank you.
Good evening. If you could please state and spell your name for the record, give us your address, and tell us about the project.
Great. I'm Dan Siciliano, twenty-three-fifteen Alta Drive. This is Holly Siciliano, my wife. We're working with Javier Garcia of GT Professional Services, a licensed contractor who specializes in these kinds of walls. Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you. I'm anxious because Commissioner Rogan, who we've been working with, is no longer with us at this meeting, but we'll forge ahead anyway. I just wanted to highlight that there are some distinguishing issues related to the confusion of public and private space with this property due to its unique history. And so I do think it does constitute an extraordinary and exceptional situation that, in fact, creates a couple of issues. So first, if that's helpful, this is, the photo you have is correct, obviously, in the supporting documents. For whatever reason, some of the additional letters and items did not end up in those documents, so I'm happy to enter them into the record if they matter. But I thought it would be helpful first to realize that on Alta, in that location, we are the only property that doesn't have a blocking wall that is at least ten feet tall, or in the case of the wall across the street, eight feet plus a barricade plus barbed wire. And that's including the next-door neighbor who has an approved eleven-and-a-half-foot wall, and the house down from that has a ten-to-eleven-foot wall, and then the house down from that has a ten-to-twelve-foot wall. And it creates an unusual circumstance in that, in the visual field of the entire, you know, street, we're the only house that has what appears to be a decorative entrance. And so with the extra history that I'll give you, it does create a bit of a concern in that people kind of migrate to that house. If that were the only concern, I don't think this would be necessarily a clear-cut case, except for the fact that there was an earlier mention of due diligence, which we're big believers in, and we've spent an extraordinary amount of time and resources diligencing the property. It's a unique property, and we love it, and we love the neighborhood. But it turns out that one thing you don't diligence in a modern checklist, no matter how thorough you are, is geotagged references on pornography sites. And so it turns out that, and by the way, I meant to show you the other street, so just real quick on the other neighborhoods here. This is just across the street. Sorry. There we go. This is the house. Actually, lovely properties, aesthetically pleasing walls. I know there are reasons not to put up big walls in neighborhoods, but as it turns out, that issue is sort of settled for that particular street. But the extraordinary circumstance is related to the brand called House of X. And so, if you may be familiar with, it became a well-known property in the city, and there are other Houses of X that are unrelated, but on Instagram alone, the property ended up with a twenty thousand person following. And if you added Instagram, and Twitter, and YouTube, and Reddit, the house, which was very colorful, and interesting, and very artistic, was actually quite famous. And no problem with that, no judgment. In fact, it's a part of Las Vegas history, and it's kind of cool, except for the fact that it turns out that, over the last several years, it became very commonplace for producers, people who publish that type of video, to then geotag and invite people to come and visit the property where they had filmed it. And the prior owner, a very nice and friendly guy, kind of had an air of, hey, come by any time. And so since purchasing the property, what has happened is that people, I think, most of them are perfectly well-intentioned people, sometimes a little tipsy, sometimes other, wander onto the property and literally will hop the fence or open the gate, and they're on their phone looking for the geotagged spot. And I personally encountered a young couple, they seemed like nice enough people in their twenties, they were a little bit drunk, and they're like, well, we just have a favorite, you know, it's like right around the corner. Can we see where it was filmed? And I politely said, no. But it turns out that we've now used Privacy 360, which is a firm that you can have to try to have people take down websites. We are actively engaged in that, and it is a little bit of a whack-a-mole problem. And so I think our request is that it really has impacted our ability to be on the property. We are anxious. I know people say the bus stop is across the street, there's privacy. Those are all true things, but this truly is uniquely different. And so we're hoping that you can grant this variance. It will make it consistent with the rest of the street, and we would obviously engage in an effort to make it aesthetically pleasing. I will highlight that my deep concern is that you have this intersection of kind of confused private-public space, and my job, I have extraordinary security concerns, which is a separate issue, except if you have well-intentioned but kind of intruder people are a little bit tipsy, and they're hopping a fence, and you have armed guards on the other side, that creates a real tension. And one of the letters that you have, where we can make sure you have is by a security professional who works for us, and her observation was, listen, if you have a ten-foot wall, it's a significant deterrent, and no one accidentally or on a whim crosses a ten-foot wall, and that reduces the likely interface of problems. And we would not want to have any problem.
Thank you very much. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will turn it back to the commission. Any questions? Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, Madam Chair, through you. I ride my bike through here all the time, going up and down Alta. And I remember, you know, seeing other fences that we've approved for other property owners on the same side of your street, just a few down, probably five, six years ago. My only question is, I see, is this, what's this fence made of?
The fence as proposed. It'll be a block wall, which we will ultimately stucco. And I should mention, one of the challenges of the fences, it is now even its current height, is if you pull up and have to enter any sort of code, you're blocking traffic. So our design will allow for anybody who's entering to pull all the way in and face the fence, which, because that spot in Alta, you don't want to slow down any traffic. But it'll be a block wall, similar to the one next door.
What do you, I mean, what are you going to do for landscaping on the outside?
So that area is currently, I think, an easement, which the city is currently, so we wouldn't change that landscaping. It's going to follow the same line as is already there.
Okay, but the...
On the other side, you mean?
No, I'm talking about the city side. When I'm looking at it, am I just looking at a big blank, expressionless, stucco wall? Because...
No, we pay a variant, we pay an easement. I think we pay twelve hundred every couple of months to have the city take care of it. I don't think we have an option. We may be mistaken.
Along Alta, there's a setback which has...
The city takes care of it and plants everything.
Also, it's actually quite nice, but we would...
Commissioner, I think that's a landscape improvement district along Alta that's maintained by the city and assessed to the homeowners.
Yes.
Okay. Just because I see houses with vines growing on it and everything else, and these fences, they look nice because they're, you know, there's some sort of landscaping out there. So you're telling me that there'll be some sort of landscaping in front of this wall?
Yeah, the city, through the landscape improvement district, maintains and installs the landscaping. Now, I don't know if the city would install anything to climb on the wall. That might be done by particular property owners. I know it looks like some of the older landscaping area may have been customized by some of the neighbors, but generally, the plants along the right-of-way between the property line and the back of the curb are maintained by the city as part of this landscape improvement district.
But is that from, like, the, there's a sidewalk that goes through there or not?
No sidewalk on the sidewalk.
No sidewalk.
No sidewalk. Okay, that's right. Okay, well...
But our intent is to make it consistent, yet visually pleasing, so.
Okay, all right. I don't have a problem with this.
And I know you were concerned because Commissioner Rogan's not here. And I do know that he is typically concerned about walls and adding heights on walls. But I know there were a couple of points that he wanted to make sure we put on the record, and one was the fact that while this would normally not be something he would necessarily be comfortable with, because you do have those neighbors, and especially the neighbor that had previously received a variance for a ten-foot wall approximately six to seven years ago, that's one mitigating circumstance that makes him more comfortable with this application. And, you know, understanding, again, what it looks like, I'm comfortable with that as well. And then also, because it's not going to go into the neighborhood, it's just on the main street, is also something that makes it a little bit different than some other applications that have come in for these increased walls. And so, given that, and since the rest of the commissioners have weighed in, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve item thirty-six, twenty-five-dash-oh-four-one-one, subject to all conditions, and you agree to all conditions?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. There is a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Please post, and that motion carries.
And that is final action?
Off the record, didn't Greg Morris, you still own that, the actor, that property?
A lot of, I know, yeah, Michael Jackson rented it a time. There's a lot of stories there.
He used to be on Vegas with Dan Tanner.
We're excited to own that, so.
Yeah, we were making it beautiful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that is final action tonight. Let's appeal to the city clerk in ten days.
Thank you, folks. Okay, item thirty-seven, twenty-five-dash-oh-four-one-seven-SDR-one, applicant owner, CK Investments LLC, for possible action on the land use entitlement project request for a proposed one-story sixty-two-hundred-square-foot dental office with waivers of Town Center Development Standards at six-six-three-zero Grand Montecito Parkway, Ward four, Alan Polinsky. Staff recommends denial. May I have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, the development as proposed requires numerous waivers of Town Center Development Standards that are self-imposed. As such, the development will not be compatible with the area. Staff therefore recommends denial of the site development plan review, subject to conditions if approved. Please note, there were additional documents of support received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. If you could please state and spell your name for the record, give us your address, and tell us about this project.
Good evening, Sheldon Colen, C-O-L-E-N, twenty-one forty East Pell Road, representing the applicant. As stated in front of you, it's for a dentist office and a planned development. The site is at vacant for a little while now. I'd like to address a few of the waivers. The first one is, is the adjacency to Grand Montecito. And as you can see, we're almost, you know, up next to the radius sidewalk, but it's just a little bit off, as we thought it would be best for the design that we're trying to achieve. And if you look a little further down the way in the same development, we have a school that also does not follow the road. And then in regards to the glazing, the seventy percent glazing, neither the school nor the adjacent building meets those requirements. In fact, as you can see, the adjacent building is very slim on windows. School has a few more, but not as many as seventy percent. So we feel that there is already a precedent sent in the area. And as you can see, the building does state a different kind of architecture from the others, but the client's goal is just that, to stand out a little bit in an area of mission tile and stucco that is tan. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard? Okay, seeing none, I will close public hearing. I'll pass it back to the commission to see if any of my fellow commissioners have questions. Commissioner LeBeau?
Yes, thank you. I do have a question about the material usage on this, on this property. Is the intent that the building is going to be white?
Yes.
The entire thing?
Uh-huh.
And is that compatible with the surrounding uses, existing buildings?
It's different than the adjacent buildings.
Okay.
Didn't seem to have, besides what staff just read, but when we were going through this with staff, they didn't point that out as being anything adverse, as opposed to actually, they commented that it was more of an attractive feature for this development.
Okay, no further questions? Thank you. Commissioners, anybody else? Okay. This is, this parcel was like the, is this the one that was the last parcel in a, so it's kind of a quirky little, had to work to fit something on it? Okay.
Yeah, there was something before. I don't remember what. Nobody could tell us what that walkway area was, but it is now going to be removed.
Okay. All right. I don't have any other questions. And with Commissioner Kasama not being here, I'll go ahead and make a motion on this, on item thirty-seven, twenty-five-dash-oh-four-one-seven-SDR. I'll make a motion to approve. There is a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Please post, and that motion carries.
And that will move on to City Council on December seventeenth.
Thank you. Have a good night.
And that is approved, subject to all conditions, and you agree to all conditions?
Yes, we agree to those.
Great, thank you so much. Item thirty-eight, twenty-five-dash-oh-four-one-eight, applicant owner Canyon Walk LLC, for possible action on the following land entitlement project requests. Ward four, Alan Polinsky, staff recommends denial on the land use entitlement project. Thirty-eight A, twenty-five-dash-oh-four-one-eight-VAR-one, to allow a street name change on an existing named street alignment, and a twenty-three-character street name, Skyview Ridge Parkway, where twenty characters is the maximum allowed. Thirty-eight B, twenty-five-dash-oh-four-one-eight-SNC-one, from Centennial Parkway west of Sheep Mountain Parkway to Skyview Ridge Parkway, and thirty-eight C, twenty-five-dash-oh-four-one-eight-SNC-two, from Tropical Parkway west of Sheep Mountain Parkway to Sky Outlook Parkway. May we have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, staff finds both street name change requests, as well as the request to allow a street name change to exceed twenty characters where such is not allowed... to allow a street name change to exceed 20 characters where such is not allowed, to be preferential in nature as both named street alignments are able to connect and continue westward as planned by the master plan of streets and highways. Therefore, staff is recommending denial of the requested variance in both street name changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. If you could please state and spell your name for the record, give us your address and tell us about the project.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, good evening, my name is Bob Gronhour, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing the master developer Olympia Companies. This is a master plan community which is known as Sky Summit. This commission, within the last year and a half, approved this master plan community. This is located way out in the northwest. As you can see here, highlighted in yellow, this is about 505-acre master plan community. In long this area here is the Sheep Mountain Parkway, and that's, the reason why I'm showing you that here is, is because the street alignments that we're asking to change here, it's not the alignments, the name change, is located here. This is a centennial alignment, you can see this is a 215 located in this area. So on the west side of our street here, running into the rest of our mass, through our master plan to the Red Rock Conservation Area, is in one section where we would like to make the street name change. The other one is located here along the tropical alignment, and again, this would be on the west side of the Sheep Mountain Parkway, as it goes on through the community. As I can show you here, with the different colors of the planned uses on the property, again, this would go from the Sheep Mountain Parkway to the edge of our property, which runs east and west, and then the other street name change would be located in this area, which is along the tropical alignment. As you may know, when you deal with master plan communities, this is not an unusual request. This is more of a theming situation that you're dealing with here. This is as part of our theming for Sky Summit, which is no different in your master plan communities such as Summerlin. We have street name changes, or I call it Picoli Ranch, somewhere in that area. We have ramp art changes for Apache, you have other streets that change in, in Summerlin, or even in Southern Highlands, and if you're familiar, if you're on I-15, get off the off-ramp, you make a, you go east, it's Saint Rose Parkway, you go west, and north, you go in the Southern Highlands Parkway. So nothing unusual, and I think what makes this easier here is you definitely have a demarcation with the Sheep Mountain Parkway. When you come over to the other side, you have that new master plan community. So with that being said, we'd ask you to approve the street name recommended, changes that we're asking for, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. This item has been noted for public, comment, any members of the public wishing to be heard on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment, I will pass it to the commission, who, anyone have questions? Okay, Commissioner Schottman, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I, I don't have a problem with this, I, I've seen this many, many times, as Mr. Gronhour has said, so. I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion on item 3825-041A, 38A 25-041, 1A VAR1, 38B 25-041A SNC1, and 38C 25-041A SNC2, moved to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you very much. There's a motion on the floor, please cast your vote, please post, and that motion carries.
Thank you.
And those items will move on to city council on December 17th.
Thank you. Item 3925-0425, applicant ACG Design, owner Oakbrook Realty and Investments, II LLC, for possible action on the following land use entitlement project requested, 307 and 319 South Main Street, Ward 3 Diaz, staff recommends approval on the land use entitlement project, 39A 25-0425 ZON1, from CM Commercial Industrial to C2 General Commercial, APN139342103. 39B 25-0425 SUP1, for proposed 10,626 square foot alcohol on-premise full use with a 14,375 square foot outdoor patio area. 39C 25-0425 SUP2, for proposed nightclub use with an outdoor patio area. 39D 25-0425 SDR1, site development plan review for proposed two-story 10,626 square foot nightclub development with a 14,375 square foot outdoor patio area. May we have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, rezoning of the southern portion of the proposed site to C2 is appropriate, as it will allow for integration of the entire property as a single C2 lot, and this zoning district is compatible with the adjacent districts and uses. The nightclub and on-premise alcohol uses can be conducted harmoniously with the surrounding land uses, and can provide additional event space for our downtown residents and tourists. The impact of reduced parking and a six-foot front yard fence is minimal in this area. Staff therefore recommends approval of all requests, subject to conditions for the special use permits and the site development plan review. And I wanted to note that assessor's parcel number on the parcel requested for rezoning, which was 25-0425ZON1, should be 1393421004. There was an error on the agenda that noted 003 as the parcel. And we felt that both parcels were notified, and so we do not have an issue with notification. But want to correct that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you for that correction. Good evening, folks. If you could please state and spell all your names for the record, give us your address and tell us about the project.
My name is Carrie Sheahan, architect with ACG, 4310 Cameron, Suite 12A. I have the ownership of Hogs and Heifers with me, and-
My name is Michelle Dell, I reside at 2600 Pinto Lane, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89107. I own Hogs and Cat, Hogs and Cats, Hogs and Heifers Salon, and it's stated on the agenda that it is Oakbrook Realty, but it is no longer Oakbrook Realty as we have now purchased that property, and the property is held under Alley Cat LLC, which is us, and Hogs and Heifers is our tenant, which is me. I appreciate the opportunity to be here before you today, and the city staff has really been dynamite in assisting us in this process, and we're really grateful, excited to be staking a claim in downtown on Main Street. Thank you for having us.
You want to go ahead and tell us about the proj, oh?
No, go ahead.
Go ahead, tell us about the project.
Okay, and as, as was stated by staff, that we are proposing a two-story building located on the, I guess you call it the southern portion of the lot, with an event, event center on the north part, next to an existing hotel that's on the corner of Bridger and South Main Street. So, yeah, we've, basically, this is, this is for restaurant, I mean, I'm sorry, it's for a bar. And I can, I can kind of walk you through the floor plan, but, you know, it does, the bar does have a lot of history that extends, and I'm sure Michelle can talk about it all the way back to its early days in New York City. So there's a lot of elements in the bar, architecturally, that we've carried through, that are, were currently carried into their existing bar that was on Third Street, that we've now, you know, replicating and enhancing at this location. So there's just a tremendous amount of history with this, 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 this bar, and, you know, it's been a pleasure to work on it. I think I'd like to show you the floor plan. The main street's on this side, and I've actually, I don't know if you can see the whole thing, but kind of highlighted the portions, it's an L-shaped bar in the middle, because, and it offers both, both the bar area, but also a retail area for, you know, purchasing merchandise, accessories, things like that. There's also a restroom area, and there's back of house area, which, which, which has all the, you know, refrigerated and staff areas that are needed to support it, along with security and all that. And the second level is, would occupy a portion of, like, a portion of the second level, and that, that'll be all administrative level, so. Elevation-wise, it is a metal building, we are incorporating some unique materials in the elevation, some, this is the front here, which is very similar to the current location. It also has an awning that extends along Main Street, because we're trying to keep the character of an, you know, of a downtown area as well, and the, and the awning would extend down on the event side, to enhance both of those sides, which is more the public areas. The south side, the south elevation does incorporate broken-up materials and compliance with, you know, the regulation, but, but also, you know, just four-sided architecture provides, you know, enhanced, enhancements on all sides. The other, the other side, this would be the events area, which is within the enclosed events area. So we're in court, kind of have a wood grain vertical look with, with, with the ability to go access the bar from that, that area as well. If you, if you, I can have Michelle talk a little bit more, or if you have any comments?
I, why don't we, go ahead, Michelle, because you're so excited, quickly.
For us, the design of the bar, we really weren't looking for more actual bar space. We were looking to have more back of the house space, so that we can maximize our margins, and we're able to order in bulk and get better pricing, which is something that's really difficult for small businesses, when you don't have the space to do that. So this is exciting for us to be able to create a space that allows for more storage capacity for us. Having a patio out adjacent to the business is really exciting for us. We are known for many of the special events that we do. We do a lot of work with, within our community, we do a lot of charity events, we do a lot of events that have artistic aspects to them. We just had our pre-seema party at Atomic Gulf, which were generous enough to allow us to use their outside area to activate an event that was in its 17th year with us, where we do a car show, a live art panel jam with world-renowned airbrush artists, mini truck Hall of Fame induction ceremony, and we're just really excited, we're going to have a space where we can be able to bring these things back. Very excited about the museum on the other way there. And where, one of the things about having this outdoor space is that we're also really looking to create a space that we're able to open up to our community, so it doesn't just have to be used for bar-related events. We also want to very much be able to create a space that, when we're not using it specifically for events, our community is able to access it. We're able to separate it off at certain points if we want, and we need to, if we're doing a food truck night, or a vendor afternoon, and we want to be able to have it open to family, we're able to separate out and close off the section of the bar that has open access to the alleyway, I mean, sorry, not to the alleyway, to the event side, so that our customers for the bar only enter from the front, and now we're able to have a separate activation in our event space that is, you know, super community-friendly. My COO, Michelle Sandler, is here today, and I'd have her talk more about the event side of things.
The space that she has, or that we actually have together, is .56 acres, and the main thing, the first phase is to get the bar open. But during this phase of the event side is, it gives us the opportunity to capitalize and become partners. We've actually made really great relationships with the businesses around us, to include the Plaza Hotel, our next-door neighbors and things like that, and even just beginning this abatement process currently has cleaned up the neighborhood a little bit, I will have to say. One thing that we do bring to the street, we will obviously gate off that side of the lot, this portion of the lot, but-
The whole property.
Well, the whole property, but, and what we'll do is we'll have an easement to come in and out on both sides. But at the end of the day, just what we do with the community and the ability for corporate events, that's kind of where my background is. I produced trade shows for nine years, and so on and so forth, but besides that, people are anxious to do events outside. They want to be outside, they want to sit outside, whether it's community or corporate. And this gives us the opportunity to do that and partner with people.
Thank you so much. This item has been noted for public comment, are there any members of the public wishing to be heard? Come on up. State and spell your name and give us your address, please.
My name is John Marshall, J-O-H-N-M-A-R-S-H-A-L-L, and I own the Bridger Inn Hotel on the corner, next to their property, and I have for 25 years, and believe me, and operated it. When I bought it, I never believed that that property would sit vacant, as long as it has. For the last 17 years, we've been faced with two abandoned buildings, and the Victory Hotel went down just a few years ago, and it's created, you know, a place for the homeless. There's been two or three fires in each one of those buildings, and it's, we've had rodent problems. When Michelle, both Michelles came before they had even acquired the property and talked to us about what they were going to do, we could be, couldn't be more excited than to work with them. It'll add traffic to that port, portion of Main Street, which it's, hasn't had for many, many years, and we just look forward to a fantastic relationship and working with them. So we highly approve the project. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Folks, was there anything you wanted to say in response?
Thank you, John Marshall. Our offices at the moment are presently in the Bridger Hotel, and we're really, we've talked a lot about ways that we can work together, and we're super excited about the relationship we've already built.
Great, okay.
We see nothing but great things in the future.
Absolutely. All right, so with that, I will pass it to the commission. Anybody have any comments, commissioners?
Yes, Madam Chair, through you. So thank you for bringing this to me, thank you for coming to my office and, and explaining this, and thanks for not bringing your loudspeaker and yelling at me in the office. I think you yelled at me about 15 years ago in the bar, but that's one of the things that y'all do, get on the, on the bar top and speak real loud with speakers and dance and everything else, and y'all been an institution, been down here, when, when did you open, like, 2000?
2005.
2005, okay, I thought it was 2008, but 2005?
Yeah, July of 2005.
Been here forever, and it's great that you're getting this new spot, and I think you'll have more room to do more events.
Your call has exceeded the maximum permitted duration. You will be disconnected now. Goodbye.
Okay, I think that, that's telling me I need to stop talking, and I need to, I need to make a motion.
Right out of the movie Brazil.
But thank you for, like, doing a good job with the, the building all the way around, putting the wood all the way around, making it look good from the outside, and not just throwing up a building and, and just, just trying to squeeze every dollar out of it. You actually, actually are going to be contributing to that neighborhood, so thank you for doing that. And the biggest issue that I was concerned about was the Bridger Inn, and glad, glad to hear that he come out and support, and when you told me that, I, and now seeing him here, so that, that, that makes me feel really good. So for all those reasons, I'm in supporting this and looking forward to you opening, and I'm ready to make a motion, Madam Chair.
Please do.
On item 3925-0425, 39A 25-0425ZON1, 39B 25-0425SUP1, 39C 25-0425SUP2, and 39D 25-0425SDR1, moved to approve, subject to staff's conditions, and you agree with all staff's conditions if approved.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. There is a motion on the floor, please cast your vote, please post, and that motion carries.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, those items will move on to city council on December 17th, and I'm sure our late Steve Gepke would be very pleased if this passed tonight, so.
Thank you.
All right, item 4025-0435VAR1, applicant Taco Escobar, owner Bor Hirsch LLC, for possible action on land use entitlement, project request to allow proposed projecting sign that does not conform to Title 19 development standards for maximum sign area and maximum projection from the building elevation at 509 Fremont Street, Ward 3 Diaz, staff recommends denial, may I have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, the proposed projecting sign does not meet the standards set by Title 19. Staff finds the applicant has created- 19. Staff finds the applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by proposing a sign exceeding the maximum allowed projection from the building and sign area. Therefore, staff recommends denial. Please note additional documentation of protest was received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Please state and spell your name for the record, give us your address, and tell us about the project.
Hi, my name is Troy Traub. I'm with Unique Signs. We're going to be building the sign. What was the second question? Sorry, it's the first time I've ever done this, so bear with me a little bit.
Oh, that's okay. Just, you know, just for the record, your name and the spelling of your name and your address, and then you can just tell us about the project.
Sure. Troy Traub. It's T-R-A-U-B. Address is 67 East Aggett in Las Vegas. And this is the proposed sign. Oh, there it is. It's what we call a spectacular sign. It's in that neighborhood where everybody has to have a spectacular sign. The client really wanted it to be spectacular. They did come up with the basic design, and then we fixed it around to make it something that's buildable and that would be as close to the rules and regulations as that we could get. It is in a neighborhood that has a lot of really large signs. The neighboring sign, for example, is much larger than this sign. So I wrote a couple of things down here. It says, why do we want a big sign? And obviously, the biggest one is to give the business exposure. There's lots of competition around there. There's a lot of landscaping that actually blocks a small sign. The structure of the building in front of it blocks it, or building next to it, I should say, blocks it. Does not have the same foot traffic as Fremont Street experiences across the, on the other side of Las Vegas Boulevard. The Griffin sign next door is 20 feet tall in the same projection, so substantially more square feet with exactly the same projection as we were trying to get for this one. And then the other thing is to fit in with the area's spectacular signage, a sign in keeping with the feel of the area and what has that downtown Las Vegas vibe. This, for example, is, this is basically the same pictures I have here. Here is the picture without the rendering of the proposed sign in there, of the sign right next door. That is, this is 20-foot-tall sign, and we're only 12 feet tall.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
That's it.
All right. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard? Okay, seeing none, I will close public hearing. I will pass this back to the commission. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll be abstaining on this matter as I have an ongoing business relationship with the owner of this particular property.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Schlotman. All right. Commissioner Runford?
Yeah. I like the, I think the sign's pretty cool. And this is Vegas, and we are about signs. And so, especially in this area, I don't see any problem with this. I know, is there, is, let's see, you know, yeah, I, you know, in terms of the height and stuff, there's, I've been down the street. I know there's other signs, like your next-door neighbor, they're bigger and higher. So, and then I'm looking at it, too. It's not like protruding over the walking area or anything like that. So I think this is, it's a cool sign, and I might be hanging out there.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I'd like, you know, I'd like a motion for approval.
Perfect. Yes, go ahead, please.
All right. For item number 4025-0435VAR1, like to motion for approval per staff conditions. You are fine with all the conditions?
Yes.
All right.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Runford. There is a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Please post, and that motion does carry. Thank you very much, sir.
And that item will move on to City Council on December 17.
Thank you. Item 4125-0443VAR1, applicant owner Thomas and Taisha Elmore, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request to allow a proposed eight-foot block wall where five feet with a two-foot solid base is the maximum allowed in the front yard at 7901 North Jones Boulevard, Ward 6 Bruni. Staff recommends denial. May we have the staff report, please? Staff report?
Madam Chair, no evidence of the unique or extraordinary circumstance related to the physical characteristics of the property has been presented to warrant the requested variance. As such, the hardship is self-imposed, and therefore, staff recommends denial of the request. Please note an additional documentation of protest was received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, folks. If you could please state and spell your name for the record, give us your address, and tell us about your project.
My name is Taisha Moore, T-I-E-S-H-A-M-O-O-R-E. Address is 7901 North Jones Boulevard, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89131. So we are requesting a variance for the frontage wall height of eight feet for the residence. Currently, Jones Boulevard is considered the frontage, but we are requesting to use Joe Marcy as a frontage and Jones as a corner side. As a previous case, the adjacent parcel on the north side of the parcel has a frontage wall height in excess of eight feet. We would like to match the neighbor's wall height. The proposed wall will be constructed out of cement block.
Anything else? Just want to make sure you're done presenting.
Yeah, no, that's it.
Okay, thank you. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard? Okay, seeing none, I will close public hearing. I will pass it back to the commission. Anyone have any questions on this project? Okay. I did drive by it today. It's a beautiful property. What you're doing is really nice, and I did notice that your neighbors have the same height wall, so I don't have any problem with your request. And so at this time, I'm prepared to make a motion. So I will make a motion on item 4125-0443VAR1 to approve that motion, subject to all staff conditions, and you agree to all staff conditions.
Yes.
Fantastic. Thank you. Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. And that motion posts, and it passes. So thank you, folks, very much for coming down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, that item is final action tonight unless appealed to the city clerk within 10 days.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Have a great night. Okay, item 4225-0465, applicant Terawatt Infrastructure, owner Bell Real Estate LLC, for possible action on the following land use entitlement project requests. On the north side of New York Avenue, approximately 260 feet west of Fairfield Avenue, Ward 3 Diaz, staff recommends approval on the land use entitlement project. 42A 25-0465SUP1, special use permit for proposed delivery and service vehicle storage use. 42B 25-0465SDR1, site development plan review for a proposed service vehicle storage facility with waivers of appendix of interim downtown Las Vegas development standards, Area 1. May we have a staff report, please?
Madam Chair, the proposed vehicle storage development will be adequately screened from the existing adjacent multifamily residential developments and can be conducted in a manner that is compatible and harmonious with the surrounding uses. Staff therefore recommends approval of the special use permit and site development plan review, subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. If you could please state and spell your name for the record, give us your address, and tell us about the project.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, my name's Bob Grohnauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. With me is David Brown. Both of us are representing the applicant on this matter. We appreciate staff's recommendations for approval, so I'll try to be short here. This is a vacant piece of property. It was once used as a parking lot, as staff has mentioned. We're coming in here and building, repurposing the property for some EV chargers for fleet companies to use. I just want to show you just quickly the property that's before you, as you can see on the site plan that staff had earlier. And then this is the elevation of the building that we've worked with the planning commissioner here and made sure that this has an eye appeal on the street. And I wanted to at least give you an idea of what we're proposing here, at least from an elevation. This is the amenity building where you'd sit in there and wait while the car is getting charged within the parking lot. And we've talked about this. We have canopies in there. That's why we don't have trees within the parking lot, because the canopy does cover everything in there. So I just wanted to mention that. And David wanted me to be very quick, because he said we need to go home. We're getting old, and we need to go home to bed. So I'm going to be done.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grohnauer. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard? Okay. Sir, were you wishing to be heard on this item?
No.
Okay.
He's with us.
Oh, okay, great. Fantastic. Then I will close public hearing. I will pass it back to the commission. Anyone on the commission besides Commissioner Schlotman have questions or comments? Nope. Okay, Commissioner Schlotman.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Appreciate you working with me and the applicant working with me and Mr. Grohnauer. And we went back and forth on this a few times, and it started out being just a white container and ended up getting some color and encouraged them to put on some of the wood and some of the black or the gray decorative panels on the front. And then with that black on the roof, it really stands out. So thank you for putting in a little bit extra. I know it's probably going to be the nicest-looking thing in that little neighborhood, but this is how neighborhoods start to change. And so I appreciate that. And the reason why we don't have trees on the front is because we have an easement up there, so we can't get those put in. Question for staff, I didn't see this in the backup. Do you all have this? Do we need to put this on the record so we can say, hey, this is what-
Yeah, Madam Chair, through you, we just received those this morning, so they are in your backup packets that you received today.
Okay, perfect. Well, Madam Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
Please do.
On item number 4225-0465, 42A 25-0465SUP1, 42B 25-0465SDR1, move to approve, subject to staff's conditions, and you agree to all staff's conditions if approved?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes.
I'm just having fun with you.
Please post, and that motion carries.
Thank you, and have a good night. See you in a couple weeks.
And that is final action unless appealed to the city clerk in 10 days.
Thank you very much. Item 4325-0466, public hearing, applicant Rhythm Roast, owner BJH Property LLC, for possible action on the following land use entitlement project request on .97 acres at 2747 North Rainbow Boulevard, Ward 1 Knutson. Staff recommends denial on both items. 43A 25-0466VAR1 variance to allow 39 parking spaces where 43 are required. And 43B 25-0466SUP, special use permit for a proposed 3,800-square, 3,800-square-foot alcohol on-premise full use. May we have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, although the proposed land use is appropriate in the C1 Limited Commercial zoning district and meets all special, minimum special use permit requirements, the requested variance indicates the site does not provide sufficient parking spaces for all the uses on site. Therefore, staff does not support the requested special use permit and variance and recommends denial of both. Please note an additional documentation of support and protest were received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. If you could please state and spell your name for the record, give us your address, and tell us about the project.
Yes, George Ross, R-O-S's in Sam, S's in Sam, 7582 Las Vegas Boulevard South in Las Vegas, 89123. Good evening, Madam Chair, planning commissioners and staff. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Rhythm Coffee. Pam Matthews is the business owner and operator, and she's requesting to operate predominantly a coffee shop. Currently, as you can see by the site plan, there is a mini-mart that is currently built with a gas station, and then this building that's already built, that is 3,800 square feet, this is the proposed site for her business. During the day, and most of the day, she's going to be serving coffee. I would suspect as the evening moves along, there'll be more alcoholic beverages served, so that's why we're asking for a special use permit for on-premises full alcohol. In addition, there are 39 parking spaces that are on-site, and currently, the requirement is 43, so we're just a few short. And that's why we're requesting a variance this evening. She's not anticipating doing any kind of gaming, and that building has been vacant for many years, since its construction, I think it was in 2021. So I know it's late, so I'm ready to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, sir. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard? Okay, seeing none, I will close public hearing. I will see if there's anyone on the commission with questions.
Madam Chair, through you, for clarification, you said you're not going to serve alcohol, and that's why you're not getting a SUP?
No, there'd be no gaming, but we will be serving full alcohol if we're granted the special use permit.
But I just don't see a special use permit here. I just see a variance.
I believe there was both, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry. Got it. Thank you.
Okay.
I don't have any questions or comments. Commissioner Schlotman, did you want to make a motion on this item?
Yes. On item 43, 43, is it 43A and B?
It is.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had an A for written across here as if it was held in abeyance, but it was just the recommendation that got changed on this. So on item 43A 25-0466VAR1 and 43B 25-0466SUP1, move to approve, subject to staff's conditions. Can you agree to all staff's conditions if approved?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, there's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Please post, and that motion carries.
And those items will move on to City Council on December 17.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 4425-0469VAR1, applicant Martha Gabriela Romero Cisneros, owner Construction Group, Inc., for possible action on a land use entitlement project request to allow 19 parking spaces where 41 spaces are required at 2187 North Decatur Boulevard, Suite 110, Ward 5, Summers Armstrong. Staff recommends denial. May I have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance related to the physical characteristics of the property has been presented to warrant the requesting parking variance. As such, the hardship is self-imposed, and therefore, staff recommends denial, subject to conditions if approved. Please note there are additional documents of protest and support received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. If you could please state and spell your name for the record, give us your address, and tell us about the project.
Good evening, Chairman, and everyone else here. Thank you for taking us today. My name is Jose Rivas. My address is 10931 Preston Trails Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89126. And here with me is my wife, who speaks very little English, so she's not going to be, she's not going to be participating, but yes. So we're seeking approval to increase the number of workstations from the currently approved three stations in the beauty salon to six stations. Our salon is designed to serve the surrounding community, many of whom live within walking distance or use public transportation. Because our clients are primarily scheduled by appointments, we anticipate no more than two or three individuals waiting at any given time. If clients must wait longer than 15 minutes, they usually schedule and return at a later time, minimizing extended use of the site parking. We believe this request is well supported by the available parking capacity in the neighborhood conditions and as detailed in the report that we submitted. In addition to these sites, spaces, there's ample side street parking that can accommodate approximately four additional vehicles. Two adjacent parking lots on either side of the building can collectively accommodate up to 40 vehicles, providing further relief for parking. The salon clients primarily arrive by appointment, significantly reducing overlap and congestion. Walking clients are minimal. When present, wait times rarely exceed 15 minutes, and clients generally reschedule rather than remain waiting. Based on this model, we anticipate no more than two to three clients waiting at a time, even with all six stations active. A large portion of our clientele lives in the immediate neighborhood and either walks or uses public transportation to visit the salon- walks or uses public transportation to visit the salon. Concluding this, given the existing parking of 20 spaces, which includes the handicap, low impact from client wait times and the reliance of many customers, alternative transportation, the request to expand to six salon workstations will not cause undue strain on public, on parking or traffic. We respectfully ask for approval of this variance to allow the salon to open up to six stations. In addition to, to that statement, the building had been vacant for a very long time. There was a liquor store in the corner there, and we came in and we completely cleaned up the, the, the space. There was a lot of homeless people residing there, sleeping by the door, and we completely cleaned up the space to the point where the whole place is now active, actively leased. The surrounding clients that come in have really welcomed us there. They, they see the salon is a very convenient place to, to come do their, their full services. Here's a picture of the outcome of the salon here. If you can see that, so. They really cleaned up the space, so if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. This item has been noted for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard? Okay, seeing none, I will close public hearing, and I will pass it back to the commission. Any questions from commissioners other than Commissioner Munford? Nope. I will pass it to Commissioner Munford.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm, I don't really have a problem with this. I, I used to own a beauty salon, so, you know, I understand trying to expand and get more, more production out of your space. I'm looking at your space inside. It, you know, it looks like it could, it could fit to be more. Like I said, the only, the only issue is, is parking when you add more. But, you know, I'm, I'm looking at the different businesses in there. It seems a lot, the other businesses, people kind of, you know, if they go to the liquor store, they're coming in and they're going right back out. Usually, for a salon, you know, clients come in, they get their, their hair done, and then they're gone. So, you're talking about at max maybe six people coming in at any time, if you're full. And, you know, as a small business, I'm sure you wish, you know, you want to be full.
Correct.
So, I don't have any problem with this. I'm going to recommend for approval.
Apologies. Yes, if you're prepared to make a motion?
Madam Chair, through you, for item number 44, 25-0469 VAR 1, motion for approval per conditions of, of planning. Staff, are you fine with those?
Yes.
There's a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. Please post, and that motion carries.
And that will move on to City Council on December 17th.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Item 47, 25-0475 DIR 1, applicant owner, city of Las Vegas, for possible action on a request to approve the 2026 Planning Commission meeting schedule. Staff recommends approval. Ms. Ettoz, was there anything you wanted to say on this item?
Madam Chair, yes. Before you tonight is the proposed 2026 Planning Commission calendar for adoption, and staff is recommending approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the 2026 Planning Commission meeting schedule. There's a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. Oh, public hearing? Okay, sorry about that. Oh, it is a public hearing. This item has been noted for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public hearing, and I will turn it back to the commission, and I will again make a motion to approve item 47, 25-0475 DIR 1 for the 2026 Planning Commission meeting schedule. There's a motion on the floor, please cast your vote. Please post, that passes.
And that is final action tonight unless someone doesn't like our schedule and wants to appeal to the city clerk in 10 days.
Okay. Item 48, 25-0486 DIR 1, applicant owner, city of Las Vegas, for possible action on a request to appoint a member of the Planning Commission to the Downtown Design Review Committee from the following list of planning commissioners, Jeff Rogan, Trinity Schlotman, Serena Casama, Stephen Munford, Jennifer Taylor, and Lindsay LeBeau. Staff has no recommendation. Ms. Ettoz, since we have a new commissioner, would you just give us a brief overview of what this, of what this committee does?
Madam Chair, the Design, Downtown Design Review Committee consists of three downtown district business owners, one representative from the Planning Department, one representative from the Office of Economic and Urban Development, and two representatives from the Planning Commission. Currently, Commissioner DeSalvio is the only planning commissioner on the board, and this item is for the election of the second planning commissioner on the Downtown Design Review Committee. For clarification, this committee mainly reviews signage on our scenic byway. Our scenic byway has specific requirements in regards to neon and movement. I would say 99% of our applicants are happy to, you know, comply with the scenic byway or the entertainment overlay or the casino overlay, and these are most, most of these applications are handled administratively. On a rare occasion, we do have some applicants that wish to request waivers through the Downtown Design Review Committee if they do not want to comply with the neon requirements or the movement requirements of the sign. And then that would be when we would call for a meeting, and the review committee would review that sign and their request. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I will open this item up for nomination for a member of our commission to serve on this committee. Does anyone have any nominations?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, I nominate Commissioner Munford.
Okay, thank you for that nomination. So, we'll go ahead and, I'll make a motion for appointment of Commissioner Munford to the Downtown Design Review Committee. There's a motion on the floor, please cast your vote, and post, and that motion carries. Congratulations, Commissioner Munford.
And that is also final action unless someone wants to appeal Mr. Munford's nomination within 10 days.
If he and Commissioner Schlotman don't stop talking on the sidebar, I may do that. Okay, all right. And then finally, item 49, citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Are there any members of the public wishing to participate in this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close item 49, and I will adjourn the November Planning Commission meeting.